Morning, ladies and gentlemen. It is one minute after 10 o'clock on this Tuesday, December 8th. We are here for our workshop on housing stability during the COVID-19 pandemic. I want to welcome everybody back to chambers. And let me turn it over to the city manager for any opening comments, and then we'll get straight into citizen input and then the discussion and presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and commissioners. It's good to be here this morning, and I will be brief. We've got a very, very full agenda, lots of materials. We've got experts here. I think this conversation is very timely as we look forward to things that are impacting our community, especially related to COVID. But in this case, we're going to talk about housing homelessness and that general instability created by the pandemic that we're facing today. So I'm encouraged by the material that our experts have put together, that the participation of our local partners have engaged with, and certainly, we continue to look for solutions. I don't think there's a single great solution, and we found that to be the case throughout these eight or nine months that we've lived in the pandemic. But I think it's important to try to stay ahead of it if at all possible. I'm going to introduce, and I know we'll go to public comment, but I'm going to introduce Abena Ojitaio. She has the lead from the city's point of view. She's joined by her expert staff. She has some local partners with her that will also participate in the meeting. I just wanted to acknowledge the good work that they've done. I think the materials that you have, you'll agree. So thank you for allowing me to introduce that, and we're ready for today.
Excellent, wonderful. Any questions or comments before we get started for the city manager in general? All right, let's move forward. Mr. Cook, it's my understanding we have both in-person public comment and virtual public comment.
That's correct, Mayor.
Why don't we go with the in-person public comment? I see we have the microphone set up.
That's correct.
All right, yes, sir.
All right, we have, at this point, I have four speakers. The first will be Chuck White. Our citizens who speak will speak from the microphone nearest where they are seated. Each will have three minutes for comments. I will give you a heads up at about two and a half minutes. And with that, Chuck White, who will be followed by Stanley Sims.
Mr. White, good morning. Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Chuck White. My address is 537 Frank Shaw here in Tallahassee. Mayor, thank you for having this discussion, commissioners. My interest is in employment for folks that are homeless. I'm with an organization called Help Florida Employment Services. We work with folks that are homeless and try to get them employment. There are numerous employment opportunities out in our community right now, but they're inaccessible because of lack of public transportation. I made a comment to the commission a few weeks ago regarding commitments that were made by the city commission back about five years ago, five and a half years ago at least, that provided for transportation to the folks that were being served at the homeless centers here in Tallahassee. We, because of the COVID situation, that particular program was backed up understandably. And now that we're going back to normal operations or working towards normal operations, it's imperative that we have access to bus transportation. There has been some provisions, some tickets offered to the coalition, but not nearly adequate to what we had. We were issuing somewhere around 500 bus passes per month, and these were getting people to medical appointments, to dental, to mental health, to legal, to employment. So it's so important that we get this back right away. I'm surprised that Star Metro has kind of backed away from that agreement that we had, but I ask this commission to reaffirm that and get us back on the right track and get us bus passes to the extent that we need as soon as possible. Thank you, and God bless y'all.
Thank you, Mr. White, and I'm sure it'll be part of the conversation today. Our next speaker is Stanley Sims. Stanley, good morning.
And followed by Teresa Filmon, just so people can be prepared.
Good morning. My name is Stanley Sims. I'm at 1320 Avondale Way. I'm there because I bought my house through the housing crisis. So I'm equipped and finding resources in a hard time. But I'm not equipped to deal with this pandemic. Sunday, home on bedrest, watching the news, woman 13 years, rent and never missed a payment, making $50,000 a year, was evicted living in her car. Now, that's something we hear, and I believe we've got sensitized to. But there was something that the media asked that woman, and her answer just hurt me and motivated me to get off of my sick bed, to come up here. The media asked her, what are you going to do when it gets cold? And you know what her answer was? Mr. Mayor, it's already cold. And so my problem is that... You see my sense of urgency as a disturbance, as a threat to your normal operations. I was blessed today. A lot of people have been praying for me. I met the city manager up on the fourth floor because I was trying to get in. Commissioner Diane Cox, Commissioner Curtis Richardson.
You're at two and a half minutes.
When you all was on this dais and I was barred from this building, you made a plea to the city manager to meet with me. We've met. He's given me my expectations of what he thinks for my program to go forward. And despite the challenges, we met those expectations. All I'm asking you all to do is enter that same plea to let me come back in this building without being followed. Ask him to open the doors and find my project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Cook, our next speaker.
Next is Teresa Filmon, followed by Carrie Litherland.
Good morning. Thank you for joining us.
Good morning. My name is Teresa Filmon. I am the director of an organization called His Kids Too. We've been working for 21 years, mainly overseas, but we started five years ago working here with the homeless. And three days a week, we go out and feed the homeless. Usually was at the Kearney Center, and now it's at the three places that the people have been dispersed out into the community, and also Gibbs Mayberry and veterans. We work with veterans. We work with people who are physically challenged, but we do work with those three groups that they Westgate, Seven Hills, and Suburban. But what I come to today with is, we can talk about what we do, but also by doing this, by going out and visiting with homeless people, we now have decided, as you all know, the problem is we don't have enough affordable housing for low-income folks. And basically, we're just warehousing them out there at Seven Hills and Suburban and Westgate, but we're not really providing much, many avenues for them to get out of their homelessness. This gentleman, I see him, he knows me, I know him. I'm known as the donut lady, by the way, if you ever go out there. They'll say, "The donut lady talked to us," and they know who I am. But we need more affordable housing for low-income people, flat out. They don't have $700 for rent, they don't have first payment, they don't have security deposits, and so we're going to have a chronic, continue the chronic problem that we have. And so a couple of things that I was thinking about, because through these seven, eight months here we've been dealing with COVID, is they've got them over there at Seven Hills, for example. Is there any way for the commissioners or the city, county, whoever, to actually buy those hotels and turn them into efficiency apartments with very little it would take to do that? Get them out to one person per room and have those people pay $200 a month? You know, when you pay for something, it means a whole lot more for you, because right now, they're just over there trashing that hotel, and those people are going to have to do something. Once they move out, they're going to have to remodel all those hotels. But if those hotels were made into a little efficiency apartments with them having to actually pay some money, use it as a step program. Use, let's say, part of the building is free for those people who are just getting on their feet and getting their paperwork together. Give them six months or three months or something, a time limited. Then you step up to the next section where you actually are going to pay $200 a month, because that might give an incentive to make them go out there and work. And then the next program is maybe they move to tiny houses, you know, out there on Tennessee, I mean, excuse me, on 20. And we're going to have to build more tiny houses, of course. People living in those tiny houses should not be out there permanently. That should be a temporary solution. That should be a step to go live somewhere else.
You're at two and a half minutes.
Thank you. Those should just be an avenue to get out into the real world. But instead, we're just enabling people by throwing money at them, and, you know, they're not, they have no incentive to work. And I see people three days a week that are literally there. I know people who have lived at the Kearney Center for two and three years. It's not a temporary shelter. It's become a way of life, living at the Kearney Center. So I have a whole lot more on that, but my time is up. Thank you. And I guess I just sit and wait. I don't know what the next process is, but thank you for listening.
Could you give us your address for the record, please, ma'am? Could you please give us your address for the record? We ask for a name and address. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Teresa Filmon, 2330 Clare Drive, Tallahassee.
Thank you. Next speaker is Carrie Litherland.
Litherland, good morning. Thanks for joining us.
Mayor, this is the last in-person speaker I have, and then we'll go to virtual.
Can we go ahead and tee up the virtual as well and make sure that we're ready?
Yeah. And at this point, we had two individuals register for virtual. We'll hear first from Taylor Keta Bureau and then Kirsten Parrish, if Ms. Parrish is connected.
Excellent. Ms. Litherland, thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mayor and commissioners. My name is Carrie Litherland, and I am the executive director for the Legal Aid Foundation of Tallahassee. Our office is located right across the street at 301 South Monroe Street, Suite 108, on the first floor. Today, I would like to provide you with supplemental information to your agenda materials and provide a recommendation. The Legal Aid Foundation of Tallahassee is a not-for-profit organization serving low-income individuals and families in Leon County. We are partially funded by the CHSP program to specifically serve the promised zone area of Tallahassee. We provide civil legal support to residents because, as you may know, unlike in criminal cases, you're not guaranteed the right to an attorney on a civil legal matter. Our bread and butter is typically providing assistance in family legal matters, but the second most case requests that we receive are for housing legal issues such as evictions, lockouts, unsafe living conditions, et cetera. In addition to the legal services in North Florida who's mentioned in your agenda materials, we also provide support and representation for those situations. Specifically to evictions, the Legal Aid Foundation of Tallahassee provides information, resources, and free legal help to prevent evictions by a landlord. In our experience, the need for assistance is much greater than the amount of case requests that we actually receive, because it's without question that most of those that are in need of legal assistance have not found, cannot find, or cannot access a legal aid organization due to the lack of awareness, lack of education, lack of access to technology, transportation limitations, or other restrictions on movement. It's also our experience with most clients that by the time they realize they're in need of legal assistance or there is a legal remedy to their issue, the courts are already involved and the eviction filing is already on the record. And lastly, we hear so often that a potential client didn't even know there is a legal process, and they were simply told they had to get out. Due to this, we spend significant time and effort educating the public that there are legal remedies, there's civil legal housing matters, even before the landlord files a notice of eviction, as well as making the public aware of our free and low-cost legal resources available to them in Leon County through multiple organizations, including ours. In addition to representing those who are already in eviction proceedings, we work to reach and educate the public as soon as they know they might be in trouble and before the landlord has filed with the court. We also provide free assistance to residents who choose to navigate the system as a pro seletigant. During this challenging time, not only have many residents seen income disappear, but the rules surrounding evictions continuously changes. Because of this, sharing information on individuals' legal rights is even more paramount to protecting our community. We are excited that we'll be able to resume our promised zone in-person clinic, which will be held on December 22nd, as well as continue our free 30-minute phone consultations to those who are eligible. We also request that if you move forward with option two, that you include some language that protects the tenants, such as if a landlord receives money from the landlord risk mitigation fund, they would be unable to file an eviction for 90 days and must work with a tenant on a payment plan before filing for an eviction or return the funding.
You're at two and a half minutes.
Thank you. Thank you so much for holding this workshop and discussing these important issues. We look forward to partnering with you as we move through these situations as a community. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Cook, our next speakers.
Our next speaker is connected virtually, and that is Taylor Keta Bureau.
Hi. Bureau, address is 1500 DeCron Drive here in Tallahassee, Florida. So hello, I want to start by saying thank you for holding this conversation. I was planning to talk about the intersections of COVID-19 and homelessness and how they can lead to an increase in human trafficking of youth within our community, and how we need to prioritize affordable housing for youth ages 18 to 24, as well as renter and utility forgiveness and street-based outreach. Tallahassee is already a human trafficking hotspot, and Florida is said to be bumped to number one in the United States for human trafficking. So it's more cost-efficient, and it will reduce trauma if we work on preventing human trafficking through housing rather than responding to it later when it occurs. So as someone who has worked with homelessness and sexually exploited youth in this town for the past 10 years, I would like to see more teeth in our commitment to supporting homeless unaccompanied youth. I would like to see this through housing and prioritizing youth and street outreach services. And if families are being evicted and more youth are being on those streets, they're becoming more vulnerable to traffickers. One in three homeless youth will be propositioned by a trafficker within the first 72 hours of becoming homeless. If an outreach worker is not present on our streets, their chances will increase. But I also wanted to talk about how COVID is affecting housing and homelessness as it relates to the LGBTQ plus community. LGBTQ plus youth make up 3% to 5% of the general population for youth, yet they make up over 40% of the homeless population. LGBTQ plus individuals face a particular set of challenges, both in becoming homeless as well as when they're trying to avoid homelessness. This community often faces social stigma, discrimination, rejection from their families, which adds to physical and mental strains and challenges that all folks who are homeless struggle with, homeless struggle with. We need equity for LGBTQ plus people in Tallahassee, and specifically, we need to intentionally invite LGBTQ plus-focused agencies to the table to discuss housing-related matters. And I want to remind everybody of the last community conversation led by the City of Tallahassee's awesome LGBTQ plus council, where the number one request in the community was to see more work in the field of homelessness as it relates to LGBTQ plus people. So I would like to see the city engage and consult with LGBTQ plus agencies as they draft plans for housing and to engage with more youth centers as they construct plans for housing. We cannot truly and meaningfully begin to respond to COVID-related homelessness until we are talking about inviting everybody to the table to discuss. Thanks, y'all. Appreciate the time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Cook.
Our next speaker is Kirsten Parrish, and this is the last speaker we have for this morning. And I did see her on the screen a moment ago, so Kirsten Parrish, you may begin for your three minutes. If you'd give us your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Ms. Parrish, are you with us?
I believe she was on mute. Apparently, she just disconnected, and Mayor, I think we should just let you proceed with the meeting. Sorry for that, but as far as I know, that was on her end. Our end, I think, was, the connection was good.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, no other speaker?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, having heard the public comments so far, I think that we need to have some clarity and definition about housing, because we did a workshop on the different types of housing, affordable housing, low-income housing, and workforce housing. Affordable housing is one thing. Low-income housing is another thing, and workforce housing is yet another thing. And I think that we need to frame those definitions so that, as we're having conversations today, because I'm hearing a lot about making sure we have affordable housing. Well, the definition for affordable housing is different than low-income housing. And if we're going from a homeless situation to trying to find housing, we've got to believe that they're not able to afford what affordable housing is. So if I could ask staff to give us that definition to kind of set the playing field as we get into this discussion so that we're all on the same playing field.
Point well taken. I see the chairman of the county commission has joined us, Mr. Rick Miner. Thank you, sir. Good to see you. So let me go ahead and turn it over to the city manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and commissioners. Commissioner, that's an excellent point. We do have a little background information about that because it is contextual. In fact, I think you heard some comments today that the general issue of affordable housing, homelessness, it's a very, very wide continuum, but you make an excellent point. And so we were prepared to give a little background to kind of set that stage. That is a priority that this commission has constantly stressed, to add affordable housing, to implement policies related to affordable housing. And so we wanted to kind of set that stage. I'm going to look to Abena to maybe emphasize it a little bit, if you're okay with us getting to that point in the conversation, to kind of, you know, kind of set the whole table for the discussion. We know we have a crisis at hand today. That crisis is only exacerbated by affordable housing, their access to affordable housing, which is a longer-term issue that clearly is a priority in this commission and this government. So Commissioner, if that's okay, if we kind of incorporate it, it's relatively early in the conversation, just to kind of lay the background to ultimately get to where we think we are today. We're prepared to do that. And then I'll ask you to emphasize that portion of the discussion.
We're ready for the presentation.
Oh, all right. Well, thank you and good morning again, commissioners, and to all of our partners that are in the room and listening virtually. I want to thank you all for coming in quickly with resources and information to make this conversation possible. It is a timely one, and there's probably another mountain of information that could be provided. But in the interest of time, we have attempted to focus on some of the issues that we can start to get our hands around while also looking to the context that we find ourselves in even before COVID hits, as the city manager has mentioned. The issues that we're talking about can be compounding. They go far beyond today and this year's effort, so we'll try to respect that as well. But we also know that the best way to address this issue is to get started and to focus on whatever portion piece of it that we can. And so today's workshop, as we've called it, is Housing Stability During the COVID-19 Pandemic. We'll focus on what the data is telling us about our local community, and we'll look at some of the national and state trends as well and see how Tallahassee is doing in that context. Before I get started, I would acknowledge those that are in the room that will be more than equipped to answer questions as we dive into it. We have, of course, Dr. Kimball here, who's directing our community services. We have Delma Barber, who's part of our community services department and is boots on the ground when it comes to responding to homeless issues. We also have Jean Amerson, who's our housing manager, and she's hiding in the back over there. On the virtual platform, we have other staff from our customer operations, our human services division, as well as some of our partners that I'll ask to chime in a little bit in the middle of our presentation. So let's get in, unless we want to be here till 2:00. Let's start it right away. So as you know, this pandemic has been wreaking havoc since March, at least in our community. The city has consistently tried to be proactive in addressing the issues and mitigating the risk, and really, in the spirit of protecting public health and safety first and foremost, but also to stabilize households and to try to provide relief directly to residents so that they do not spiral out of control, economically speaking. We know that when we talk about housing stability, and Commissioner, to your point about definitions, we wanted to start with, what do we mean when we say housing stability? And what it means nationally is not completely well-defined, but there are some consistent themes. And that is, if you are stably housed, you have some certainty about where you are living and/or where you will live for the foreseeable future. Or you also have a choice about whether and when you will move. When those things are absent, you are feeling the insecurity or the instability that comes within the housing sector. It's, of course, inextricably linked to affordability, as you know, and if you've heard from other partners speaking. And so we're not blind to that, right? We know that when folks have safe, decent housing that costs less than 30% of their income, we call that at the national level affordable. So no matter what income you earn, if you spend no more than 30% of your income on housing, then you are in that comfortable zone. It is affordable for you. Affordability, though, also touches on whether you have, how you, your income compares to the area median income. And so often, you'll hear locally and in other parts of the country, the reference to area median income is what HUD calculates for every jurisdiction, and it changes every year. And so that's constantly a trend that we watch, and we use that as a marker or at least a benchmark to define how the average resident is doing in our community. And so I'll show you some of those numbers there, but to tie instability and affordability, we know that housing is usually the single biggest expenditure for any household. And so if that expenditure gets out of hand, you're inching towards instability or insecurity. And let me, if I could go back there, just because you asked a question about the variation. So often, when we talk about affordable housing, since the definition applies to every individual, on the city side, as we plan for programs, we use the AMI 100% of the area median income as the benchmark for what is affordable. When you start talking about workforce housing, nationally speaking, that range is between 100 to 140% of our area median income. So that's somebody who's earning more than a moderate income for your region. Now, when you start talking about the full spectrum of housing, you start going into the transitional housing, for example. A transitional housing is a housing program, really, that typically does not have a traditional lease, as you would imagine in a market rate rent. There might be program agreements. There might be expectations of behavior. There might be time limitations on how long you can be there. And of course, the intention is that you would transition out of that into something that is more permanent. We also have permanent supportive housing, which is housing that is matched with social services or case management. And this is one of the best solutions we have for chronically homeless, and that are, those are individuals that can never sustain housing independently based on a myriad of issues. And so case management and social services are matched to it, however they are securely or they're stably housed in a unit. And then, of course, you have public housing, and our partners at the Tallahassee Housing Authority is the agency that is responsible for our public housing in this community. Public housing typically is subsidized housing. Either the housing, the development itself is owned and operated by THA, or you receive a voucher which subsidizes a portion of your rent at a private property, and you take that voucher with you wherever you go. So that's sort of part of the whole spectrum of options that we have. And the reality is, we need more... And the reality is, we need more of all of them for our community. And we need options for people to go through any pathway to security. So looking at the area median income, this graph shows you what 2020 numbers are looking like, based on our calculations from HUD. And I highlight the 80% AMI, which is usually, the phrase is low income, at 80% AMI. And what this graph shows you is just an example, based on the household size, an individual earning $40,000 a year is considered low income. And to put it into some comparison for you, we've had a lot of conversation locally about a living wage. Living wage is about $15 per hour. That translates to about $31,000 a year. And so if you're making a living wage in Tallahassee, you're still considered a low income. You're fully employed, you're gainfully employed, but you're considered low income. And you're kind of in that spectrum. You've passed the very low income, but you're still in this category. And so I'll reference that a little bit later as well as we go through the statistics. So, you know, leading up to, and before COVID, we have about 16,000 people that are extremely low income in Tallahassee. And about 11% of those are households with children under six years old.
Abena, if you don't mind, before I interrupt, I'll draw the commission's attention to this slide and the next couple of slides. Because this goes directly to Commissioner Williams Cox's question about affordability. It's very unique to how much you earn. And what Abena and her team have done is they've kind of laid out the different income stratas that we have and where people fall, and then what rent affordability or housing affordability would be. And then it goes on to talk about kind of what percentage of our residents are constrained in terms of housing costs. So the next three slides, I'd really draw your attention to that because it does paint that picture of it's very unique to the household, based on what they earn, the members in the house. And it'll give you a really good idea, that was very enlightening to me, of what's considered affordable. So I apologize for the interruption, but I think this really tells a great story for us to understand the context.
And Abena, a quick question before we dive into the numbers. Explain to us how you have factored in or not factored in the student population.
Yes, so in our market analysis, we do recognize that there's a significant population of students in the community. Based on the U.S. Census data and the surveys that we reference, it's hard to distinguish. And so we recognize that particularly in the rent, and I'll talk a little bit more about that on the rental market. I think that's where we capture a significant portion of our students. But when we start to look at households with children, then we can start to separate those individuals that might have been considered students. So when we look at the various breakdown of the type of rentals, if it's a studio versus a one-bedroom, we can start to see a little bit more of that nuance. But there isn't, unfortunately, an easy indicator to say exactly how many are students versus how many are regular residents in our community.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Commissioner Porter and then Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you. I'm wondering if either Abena or Mr. Manager, if we could sort of provide the scope of this workshop? Because I, obviously, we have an affordable housing crisis. But then we also have sort of this immediate-ish, very urgent issue about the eviction moratorium ending.
Yes.
And my impression of sort of the goal, the primary goal of this workshop was to identify, you know, a very acute solution or very, you know, kind of that we can implement right away to prevent people who are already housed from becoming homeless. And less so, and I understand, you know, we can talk about whatever we want to talk about, and there's a lot of needs. But just for my purposes and some of the comments that I had prepared or ideas I had, if anyone has input for me on that question.
Yep.
Mr. Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Mayor, excellent questions. Really, ultimately, I think anytime we're dealing with acute issues, those that are timely, we try to drive right into those. This is a single-issue workshop, so we've got a couple hours set aside. And we wanted to make sure we painted as broad a picture of the topic as we could. But as we work through the presentation, we're going to drive to what we think the most pressing issue is of the day. Abena's going to touch on affordable housing, that broader topic that faces us and faced us before COVID. We're going to talk about, and I apologize, we should have outlined this before we started talking. We're going to talk about the current population that is unsheltered, either in emergency sheltering or chooses not to be in sheltering. We're going to touch on that. But we're also going to touch very deeply, if you will, on those households that are facing pending evictions, those that are building up in the system. We know we're under a moratorium today, but that's about to be lifted, as far as we know. That's at the end of this month. So we will drive into that, and we have some recommended actions based on that. But we wanted to make sure we painted the broadest context as we could because, you know, what we know, and we've talked a lot about affordable housing, and we've talked a lot about homelessness, because we do, these are chronic problems in communities. But it is so layered and so deep, and the continuum is so wide. I think every time we talk about it, Commissioner Williams Cox, you even asked a question. We've got to be clear, part of that is painting that broad picture. Thank you for stopping us. That's kind of where we're going. There's a story here, it's deep. It is a single-issue workshop, so we have time to dive in. That's ultimately where we'll land today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The other issue that, and Abena, you may address this as well later on, what we've seen over the years, and you see in communities throughout the nation, is as property values increase, the cost of housing increases. That's what happens in gentrification in a lot of instances. When property values go up, the cost of housing in the area goes up, and those indigenous residents are not able to afford the housing. So how is the increase, and we're seeing that in Tallahassee. We've seen it, Tallahassee and Leon County, we've seen it over the years. So that is a factor as well in the affordability of housing in our community. And I expect you may address that later on. But at some point, I mean, that is a factor in housing affordability.
Absolutely. I love it. I think you guys are really excited and eager to get into the questions. So a lot of them we will walk through, and that's awesome. Thank you for your question, and I apologize as well. I should have outlined it a little bit more thoroughly. But City Manager, you summed it up really well. We'll do this broad view. We'll get into the federal and state landscape. We'll look into our local state of affairs. And then we'll start talking about some of the interventions that have already happened, and then give an opportunity to start to discuss a little bit more of your ideas.
Excellent.
All right, so going back to that same income graph, we give you another version that zeroes in more on rent. And so looking again at what is affordable for our community context and using the example of the living-age earner, we know that they can comfortably afford somewhere between $700,000 to $750,000 a month for rent. But as you can see in the highlighted bar for low income, that's more than what an average living-wage earner can afford. So, and right now, Marcus Studies is showing that rent is, the median rent is about $1,200 in Tallahassee. So that means about half of the population pays less than that, up to $1,000 or so is what our data is showing us. But Commissioner Richardson, as you mentioned, in addition to private homes raising in value, rent also is increasing year over year, about 16% every year. And so as our population becomes increasingly renters, this agenda item tends to focus a little bit more on the rental population. And we'll see more data related to that. And of course, when we talk about eviction, this is primarily affecting, it's only affecting renters as opposed to foreclosures that are focused on homeowners. The graphs here you have in front of you give a snapshot, again, pre-COVID, the housing burden that our community was already facing. And this is critical because when we talk about the impact of COVID, the folks that are going to feel it the most are those that were already on the edge, so to speak, those that are a couple hundred dollars away from a crisis. And if you've been paying attention at all in the community, you've heard so much conversation about the Alice population, for example, which is more than 44% of our neighbors are housing burdened or they're constrained in some way, such that a $500 or so emergency could put them in a crisis mode. And so this graph summarizes some of the burdens that we're seeing. The good news is, the majority are not cost-burdened. But that's a pretty close percentage to those that are paying more than 30% of their income on housing. And then those that are severely cost-burdened, about 25% of our neighbors, those are paying more than 50% of their income towards housing expenses. And then again, on the right side, we see the renter cost-burden. Most of our renters are spending more of their money on their housing cost. So in summary, stability, again, is connected to affordability. We know that. Some of those indicators that we've just gone over are the cost burden, the rising rent cost. And of course, the income growth is increasing in our community. But the property values and the rent continues to go up high. So that's the context within which we find ourselves before COVID. The agenda item details several of the trends that we're starting to see at the national level and certainly at the state level as well. A lot of similarities across the nation. And I know you've seen the news stories about, even anecdotally, what individuals are facing. And some of that is happening in our community. I highlight here some of the metrics that relate to Florida in particular. Our unemployment rate has tripled, peaking in April at 13%. We have a survey from the U.S. Census Household Pulse, and they found that about 21% of Floridians were behind on their mortgage at the time of that survey. And about 36% were behind on their rent. We also had the PSC, the Public Service Commission, tell us in July that 600,000 Floridians were past due on their utilities. And we've certainly seen similar trends here locally with our own public utility. Then they looked across all the different states in the nation, and Florida was among the five states that had the largest increases in delinquency rate compared to 2019 in the third quarter. So this crisis is not just Tallahassee's, you know that. It's not just Florida, it's the entire nation's. And what we recognize going into this conversation is that there are certain things, absolutely, we can and should do at the local level. But a lot of the solutions are going to require partners at every single level up to the federal level. Some of the issues that we'll discuss more are, we're yet to see the full impact of it, quite honestly. And there's some speculation about what might happen at the national level and even at the state level. So we recognize that, and we want to temper our expectations. But the purpose here, we want to at least give you information about what's happening at the local level and then dive into some of those solutions that are available. All right, I'll keep going. And so looking at the local level, I want to thank the Office of Economic Vitality. They do a great job keeping up with their dashboard. This information is pulled right from there and is available for anyone to see. But, you know, if you can't get into the details here, which you can on the website, dive into it and see all the different charts. But the highlight is, we've seen that employment has gone down. Compensation, unemployment compensation claims have gone up. We've seen that even single-family home construction has gone down a little bit. And you know about the airport travel going down and the revenue implications there. So we've already started to see this, we're tracking it. We see here in this graph, just to show you what a spike it was earlier this year. Unprecedented, something like 870% jump from the previous month. It's a sudden jolt for our community, we're very aware of that. And we know how that, how much you earn affects everything else down the line. So that's part of the context as well. We looked at foreclosures, and as we talk a little bit more about that potential issue here, just wanted to show you that Tallahassee's been doing really well, having really low foreclosures since the 2008 recession. And so that's what we've enjoyed leading up to this point. And what we don't know yet, as I mentioned, is that foreclosures is considered a lagging indicator. It's something that shows up a little bit later versus some of the other trends that we watch. And so we have here cases that we've found from the Leon County Court of Clerks. And it shows that the foreclosure rates at March, and then you see that dip down. And that is largely thanks to the moratorium that has been in place throughout the summer. But that moratorium locally expired in September. And so you can start to see the cases start picking back up right around August, when folks felt like they could begin to pursue those options. But the numbers have not spiked, not nearly what you might expect yet. And so again, with when it comes to foreclosure, we think that the second, maybe first quarter of 2021 might provide a little bit more information about how our homeowners are doing in this current situation. Right now, we have about 72 foreclosure cases that have been filed since March. And there are 60 that are still pending. So a couple, several of those have been closed throughout this year, but there are 60 that we know about that is pending. So focusing in on eviction filings, so that trend is following similarly to the foreclosure trends, as in you see the dip during the moratorium. But you start to see that after August, the trend is steadily going up, and it looks like it might go past what it has been in prior years or prior years around the same time this year. We're watching that closely. And we're, of course, all waiting for what happens after the moratorium ends, the CDC moratorium, which ends in December of this year. Right now, the numbers are telling us that we have about 787 evictions that were filed when the pandemic began. And right now, we have 438 that are still pending out of that total. We'll hear a little bit more from our partner on this legal part. That's when I get out of my desk. I'm only married to a lawyer, I pretend. So we'll hear a lot more details about that because that is a primary focus of our discussion today. So looking at the challenges, what we've also tried to track is how assistance is being requested. We have just a snapshot of our dashboard here. We're tracking, in partnership with 211 Big Ben, what the request has been. And to no surprise, the bulk of the requests have been around housing assistance and also emergency sheltering. There was a period earlier this year where 211 partnered with the Continuum of Care to be a triage point for housing assistance for sheltering. And so there was a peak specifically for homeless assistance. However, consistently across the year, folks calling for rental assistance, mortgage assistance, and utility assistance continues to emerge as the top request on the human service side. So now we'll get into the local interventions. And some of you are, many of you are very well-versed on the things that we've done. You all were at the forefront of making sure we were proactive in the beginning. So I'll summarize these briefly for you. We, back in March, as soon as the pandemic hit, you told us to make sure there's no utility disconnections. And we sustained that. Initially, that was about 60 days, and we're still going with it. So we have provided alternative payment plans. We're working with customers to develop any kind of personalized approach to get them back on track. Folks have deferred payments up to a certain point. But to date, we have over 12,000 delinquent past due accounts. And that's totaled to about $8 million that's still past due. The largest portion of that, about 10,000 of it, is from our residential customers. But we also have, of course, some commercial properties in there as well. You know about the Leon Cares Program, and our county has been leading the charge on individual assistance thanks to the federal CARES Act funding. So far, we have $7.5 million that have been sent directly to residents. About 3,200 of them have been funded or approved. And we know that there's still about 25, there's about $2,500 in average payments to the applicants. But we had still more than 3,000 applicants that were in queue. And so just this afternoon, I think, I'm looking at Commissioner Miner, just this afternoon, the county will consider taking an additional allocation from Florida Housing Finance Corporation that will provide about $4.4 million. And the proposal is to apply that to those that have already submitted their applications that are in queue now. And hopefully, we'll be able to help the majority, if not all, of those that are in queue. This fancy dashboard, can you tell I like data? We We have a great team that answers all of our data needs, and they provide it to us, but I just want you to know, since the pandemic started, we've been actively tracking what the situation is on the ground, and this dashboard shows how we work with our partners on emergency sheltering. You'll know that we have, we changed over to non-congregate emergency sheltering to protect the health and safety of those folks that are experiencing homelessness. But for the purpose of this discussion, I wanted to just highlight that there are multiple partners that are working together on this. There are several emergency shelter locations distributed around the community. We have just under 470 clients that we're aware of that are part of this emergency sheltering currently. And then there's an additional population, about 100 or so, that are unsheltered in various encampments around the community. I know we have Amanda Wander with us. We work closely with the Continuum of Care. You actually, commissioners, have a seat at the table, and Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox is our representative. And that is a group that brings together all of our service providers that are supporting homelessness in our community, and that spectrum is pretty wide. But we, this group has been actively engaged, in fact, more than ever before, having bi-weekly and sometimes weekly calls to coordinate the services that we provide to individuals that are experiencing homelessness. I'll draw your attention to the capacity, it's 67% capacity right now, the shelters, and that includes if and when the Kearney Center reopens, their reduced capacity because of CDC guidelines. They cannot operate at the maximum they previously have. And so, you know, within our community, we know that sheltering and emergency sheltering is available, but as I think one speaker commented on, that is not the ultimate solution to housing instability. It's a safety net, it's good that it's there, but it is in no way a response to the kind of stability. In fact, I think if you speak with individuals that are homeless, they might tell you that they don't feel stable, even in the shelter. However, that is, you know, the extreme form of what might happen when folks experience instability, and our community, of course, is actively engaged around the issues with emergency sheltering. And thanks to your leadership, there's been a significant amount of investment this year, more than ever, in bringing about some kind of solution for those already experiencing homelessness. You've already appropriated several CARES Act funding that has come to the city through emergency solutions, and you prioritize rapid rehousing. You said the most important thing we can do is to quickly get individuals housed, and we've put $1.2 million in rapid rehousing efforts this year. That's being managed by the Continuum of Care and the Big Ben Homeless Coalition. There are other several providers that are also operating, continue to operating their shelters, case management, and even diversion. So the individuals that have experienced are calling for shelter, but with a little bit more conversation and counseling, we're able to divert them from coming into the shelter. There's been increased funding this year for that, and I think you'll continue to see a little bit more activity in that area. I mentioned permanent supportive housing as part of the spectrum of housing, and we have a limited number of that in our community as well. These are folks that are mainly chronically homeless and require case management throughout. This year also, we funded a landlord liaison position with the Continuum of Care because that is such a necessary part of rapidly rehousing individuals. And so a position that is hired purely to engage with private property owners, work with them, and negotiate agreements so that we can get our most vulnerable residents housed. I think at this point, if Amanda is still here, treasure clerk, you might need to help me or somebody. Amanda Wander is the Executive Director with the Continuum of Care, and she should be on our WebEx if she might chime in. I would like to yield a little bit of my time to allow her to add some comments.
Amanda, are you with us?
I am, can you guys hear me okay?
We can. Thanks for joining us.
Okay, great. Thank you, Abina, and thank you guys for coming together today. We've been feeling the pressures of, you know, this looming evictions building on our system already, and so we have been working closely with partners to pivot quickly to make sure that our homeless system is in place to serve people through COVID. It has drastically altered how we have to conduct services, especially with regard to shelter, as Abina mentioned. But there are a few other things that have happened because of COVID. You know, there are some partnerships that have happened that probably would have taken years to develop, but because people's health and housing was on the line, people have come together. We actually show that our unsheltered population is doubling from what we normally see. So typically, on any given night, we usually have around 100 people experiencing unsheltered homelessness, which is somebody who might be sleeping on the street, in a car, something like that. Well, now, we have done bi-weekly staffings and outreach weekly for that population, and it is nearly 200 people now. So with that decreased capacity in emergency shelter, that is what contributes to that. Also, we are, you know, having some trouble working with landlords through our prevention and rapid rehousing efforts. So prevention is financial assistance provided to someone who needs to avoid eviction. And a lot of landlords are hesitant to renew leases and work with clients that are already in their housing if that client has lost employment or doesn't have adequate access to sustainable income. And we know that some of the programs through prevention, through the CARES Act, as well as some of the rapid rehousing programs, allow for payment for people without income. However, the landlords, you know, are not willing to accept those people because they don't have the security of having that rental income passed when the assistance is provided. We've had a tremendous uptick in the calls for access to shelter, as well as homeless prevention and rapid rehousing. And I think the biggest point I can make to you guys today is that the homeless system of care shouldn't be the default for our response as a community to evictions. We typically, you know, process about 200 households through prevention each year, and that's for an entire year. We cannot handle as a service system an influx of 500-plus evictions being processed at the same time, and those people needing homeless prevention. Our resources, as well as capacity, cannot handle that influx. So we have to do some things in coordination with other sectors and farther upstream so that people are not falling into homelessness and at that fine line where they're having to get financial assistance to keep them from homelessness. It needs to go farther, we need to support them in employment, and we need to support them through a staged approach in how we deal with these evictions. One of the other things that we've been able to put in place, thanks to some funding with the city, is a rapid rehousing staffing process, which means that every single person who comes through our homeless system of care, we do a staffing bi-weekly about what their needs are and what their barriers are to accessing housing. And the biggest barriers right now to accessing housing include landlords that are, you know, willing to work with our population and transportation so that people can make it to employment and make it to housing options to check them out and then go on to move in. So those staffings have continued to happen, but the holdup, you know, with getting people access to units that they can afford, most of the folks coming to our system have zero incomes or less than $750 income monthly. So talking what is affordable to them, what is 30% of their income, is roughly $225 a month. So that, those are the types of solutions that we need to be considering at this point. We also have better data than ever with the COC with regards to individuals' needs. So we conduct assessments that tell us what would likely assist somebody most. Would it be emergency shelter, rapid rehousing, or permanent supportive housing? And we show in large that the majority of our population needs some rapid rehousing and case management. We also have something else I want to bring to your attention, that is something that has been a growing issue that I don't want to stick on the back burner, which is we have an unusually high rate of chronic homelessness here compared to other communities of our size. And typically, chronic homeless individuals, they are experiencing homelessness for a year or more straight, or 12 months within a three-year period, and they also have a disability. So these are incredibly vulnerable people, and it is our job as a community, and it is more cost-effective to actually provide housing and supports they need rather than having them go through the emergency systems such as emergency rooms, jails, that kind of thing. But we have about 200 people on any given day in our community that fall into that category of chronic homelessness and need permanent supportive housing. And typically, those folks are on a disability income, so they have a very reduced income of $1,000 to $700 a month. We do think that what staff is going to recommend to you today about a landlord mitigation fund will help us in our negotiations with landlords. It's really important that we be able to incentivize landlords to take people who have traditionally been more difficult to house. They want some assurances that they are going to be paid, they want some assurances that they have some support through social service partners, and, you know, and provide that through our service providers. But investing in landlord mitigation and some mediation to help navigate their landlord interactions is really something that is going to be needed considering the upcoming evictions. Abina, if there's anything else you'd like me to speak to specifically, feel free to ask me.
Thank you so much, Amanda, and if you are going to be able to stick around, I'm sure if the questions come up, we can. I do have a reference of our point-in-time count, which we do annually with multiple counties. Thank you, Delmas, for providing that for us, and the COC tracks that, so we can dive in more into that if needed. I want to just quickly summarize, and you have in front of you just the investments so far that has been made to date for the different, the different solutions that we've tried to provide since the onset of the pandemic. And so the big bulk of it has been with individual assistance. That total actually should be 12.7 million in direct assistance between the city and, but mostly through the county's funding. And then there's, of course, investments that we've been made, we've been making with servicing homeless individuals, emergency sheltering, rapid rehousing, diversion and prevention, and the small sliver on permanent supportive housing, which, as has been mentioned, are those for chronically homeless. At this point, I want to pivot to the legal aspect of things because when it comes to evictions and foreclosure, that is the main way that we provide assistance to individuals is through legal services. You already heard from Carrie, thank you for sharing about the work that Legal Aid is doing. We connected with Legal Services of North Florida, and I believe we have Stephanie Johnson, who's a senior attorney with Legal Services, to give us a little bit more context of what's happening in that world and some of the stories and the clients that they're interacting with at this time.
Ms. Johnson, are you with us?
I am, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you for having me today. I'd like to thank the Commission for holding this workshop to discuss housing security. Unfortunately, COVID is going to cause ripple effects in our housing situation for years to come. And regardless of whether a federal bill is passed this week, we as a community need to confront head-on the housing crisis that the pandemic is causing. And I've been asked to discuss what we're seeing locally at Legal Services in North Florida, but I have also been involved in statewide and national groups, and I've shared some of those statistics with your staff. I'm not going to talk about the history of the moratoriums other than just to say the obvious, that a moratorium without adequate rental assistance or other safeguards in place, we're just kicking the can down the road, and eventually, and it could be December 31st, that road ends, and we have hundreds of evictions outstanding in Leon County. And this number doesn't even include the cases out there where landlords received the CDC declaration and decided to wait until December 31st to file with the courts. So since the latest moratorium by the CDC, and really starting in August, we've seen a substantial increase in eviction filings. In November, we saw over a 60% increase from November of last year, and we know from looking at the court filings, we're only seeing a small segment of the population. We represent families who are at or below 200% of the poverty level, with some exceptions for victims of crime and seniors. So where our office would normally, pre-pandemic, see maybe five evictions per month, we now see on average three a day. Anecdotally, what we're hearing is that many of these folks, pre-pandemic, did not have an eviction history, many of them were fairly good renters, they were in long-term leases, and now they have an eviction filing on the record, which is very concerning to us because the first thing landlords do when they get applications is they check court records for eviction filings prior to entering into those leases. And we now have thousands of people statewide who could potentially be denied housing based on these COVID eviction filings. It's not even eviction final judgments, it's just the filings. So we're also seeing hospital employees, office workers, teachers who have been laid off and are now eligible for our services and who are facing housing instability. People are telling us that they know they have to leave on December 31st, but they cannot find other housing in Tallahassee, and a lot of these folks have, you know, their families with kids. We haven't seen many foreclosures yet, and I think Abina talked about that, but our experience from the previous housing crisis is that people don't usually come into lawyers until they've been served with a foreclosure action. And since a lot of these foreclosures are federally backed mortgages, those lenders have been required to take certain steps before filing the foreclosures, but we expect to see them soon. I think the city and county did a very good job with the rental assistance through the CARES Act, but unfortunately, it came late in the game when folks had already racked up many months of rent, late fees, and court costs. Furthermore, it wasn't enough money per household considering the length of the pandemic, and it came with a lot of hurdles, and there were documents required that the tenants didn't have, and many landlords were unwilling to cooperate, which made it very difficult for the tenants to get the amount of rental assistance they needed to avoid having that eviction filed. And it appears lately, in looking at the evictions, that a large number of the current evictions are folks who have received money from Leon Cares, and yet they're still being evicted. At this point, and since Leon County cares, or Leon Cares closed their portal, all we can really do is advise tenants on what the eligibility requirements are for the CDC declaration, make sure that they have sent that declaration to the landlords, and if an eviction has been filed, we can request a delay of the final eviction order. But mostly, we're telling them to prepare to move since for a vast majority of them, their leases have already ended long ago. So you can imagine, that's not very comforting advice. Our local judiciary has been better than many jurisdictions in interpreting the CDC order broadly, and we're very thankful for that. And landlord attorneys, for the most part, have been willing to wait, but not so much willing to accept lower payments or enter into new leases. Furthermore, once the moratoriums expire, a tenant will have to post the entire rent that's due into the court registry in order to get their day in court. And with tenants owing thousands of dollars in rent, there's little chance that any tenants would be able to do that. So it all sounds pretty dire, but there are communities taking innovative steps to help avoid this housing crisis, and some of them are mentioned in your workshop documents. And I do believe that just having this workshop is a good first step in doing the same thing. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. And I know you've got a case, but you were able to stay along a little bit longer, we'll really appreciate it as commissioners, if you have more questions, we can answer that further. Let me just summarize, one of the recommendations that's there for you, and then I want to yield the rest of my time to my partners in community services. As you've mentioned, you've heard a lot about landlords, and, you know, what we view in preparing this item is that we need to partner with our landlords. They are finding themselves in a, between a rock and a hard place. They also might have foreclosures impending for their properties. And so we know that as a community, we really do need to come together and match compassion with some kind of risk mitigation. That the landlord risk mitigation can take multiple forms, and what staff is recommending as part of the solution moving forward, and as a proactive way to continue to support vulnerable residents, is to establish a fund where we would partner with landlords and provide provide additional security, so to speak. You know that during the rental process, there's a security deposit that a tenant would pay. A mitigation, a risk mitigation fund will expand that pool for those landlords that are willing to work with our vulnerable residents for future leases. There are so many ways that it can be shaped and formed, and we really are looking forward to continuing to work with our friends at Legal Aid and Legal Services. You've also heard this also from the Commission of the Status of Women and Girls, in one of their recommendations. So there are several partners in the community that are eager to roll their sleeves up and develop something that will be unique for our community, and we think that that is a viable path forward to continue to partner with our landlords. We know that the issues are going to continue to compound, and we know that the size of the problem is more than our city commission can probably afford to fix by ourselves. So while the issues are dire and the situation is indeed a crisis, I do think that we have the tools in our community to begin to innovate. We want to continue to work with our partners at the Legal Services and Legal Aids for more outreach and education and counseling, because we know that folks are not as well-informed about all the options that are available to them. But all of this bleeds into so many other areas, and I'll end where I started, that housing stability is crucial to all households, and it really dominoes into multiple areas. And I think one of the departments that sees that most clearly is our Community Services Department, led by Dr. Kimball. So I'll let you give the final words.
Well, good morning. Thank you, Director Ojutayo, and Mayor Daley, Mayor Protem Matlow, and the respective commissioners, City Manager Goat, and City Manager Barber, and to all the ACMs here. One of the things that, you know, with the population that we have, our disconnected youth ages 16 to 24, who are not in school, and not employed, and more likely, they don't per se have a house of their own. One thing we found out from the 1,235 that we currently have right now, we do a survey, and we ask them, "Who's in your household? Who do you live with?" And in many times, we find out that the impact of their household is not just individual, but it's generational, because in many times, they're living with a grandparent, and a parent, and a sibling, and maybe one, two other children. So we have a generational impact on what would happen to them if they could not have housing in their particular situation. So looking at that, we do something very reasonable with them. We do life coaching with them, and we have a conversation with respect to, "Tell me about your household again," and have a conversation with your landlord with respect to-- and of course, we tell them, we ask, "When does grandma's check come in? When does your check come in? Who else is in the household that could contribute?" And having that kind of knowledge and knowing what kind of money they have coming in, we say, "Now, have a conversation with your landlord, and say, 'Look, we're able to do this on this date, we're able to do that on that date.'" Because we tell them, before we get to a process of possible eviction, you need to have a negotiation. And the first part of that is having conversation and communicate with your landlord. So we do real-life, relevant conversations with them with our case managers for life coaching, because an eviction for them, again, would not just be an individual, it would be generational. They support and have success with their generation, when they have their graduations, when they get jobs. We say we all have to have that same kind of support in making sure that you're negotiating and have a relationship with your landlord, so you don't have to come to the point of having an eviction on Legal Aid. So I do want to say, on that behalf, our temple participants and that population is doing well in that area. And we even ask, when someone will say, "Well, I'm homeless," so we do a deeper dive. "Where did you stay last night? Where did you stay the night before?" And we find out that many of them are in a sheltered place during the night, which is different from being unsheltered. And that's a conversation that I would give away to Mr. Barber, because he's the local expert on that issue. But so the population that we serve will continue to do life coaching with them, because it would have generational impact.
And I thank you, Dr. Thomas, for being so kind and calling me an expert. But I tell you, there are-- I concentrate on those that are unsheltered. And I'm in, I'm out in the community all the time. All of you commissioners and mayor of your office, you all have all gotten complaints about the unsheltered population and the problems that you think that they are causing in the community. Well, let me tell you, many of them don't want to go inside. They'll tell you, they don't want to go inside. Those that are downtown, they don't want to go inside because they feel safe and they're being fed. Many of them don't go inside, won't go inside because they can't take their animals with them. And so I believe that what's going on and what we need, we need an outdoor, I believe we need an outdoor, I call it outdoor homeless shelter, not an encampment. And what's happening with them is that they want the same services that they get if you're inside. They want the same counseling, mental counseling, they want the same food, they want the same shelter, they want to be-- they just don't want to go inside. They'll tell you. I feel, say, one guy told me, says, "Well, let me tell you this." He says, "I don't think I'm gonna catch COVID outside." He says, "I believe that if I go inside, that's where it is." Now, they don't want to have the confrontation that they have with people inside, they don't like being congregated together, and so they just don't want to go outside now. We have some cities that are doing outdoor shelters. St. Petersburg, Florida, for example, they have one that's called Florida Tents, Center Hope for the Homeless. Commissioner Cox, I think you read on that, I told you about that. And they have it, and Catholic charities is running it for them. And I tell you, if in fact, we looked at trying to do something like that, you're going to see such a change in what's happening in our community for those who don't want to be inside. I look at it like, if you're in the Appalachian, you go up in the mountains, and you want to bring somebody out of the mountain into the city, they're going to say, "That's not what they want to do." So we now, some kinds of way, here's what we're doing. For those who want to be inside, sheltered currently, or any other emergency shelter, we provide for them all of these services. For those who don't want to go inside, we do nothing, don't do anything for them. And so until we get to the point where they are provided something that's making them whole-- See, when I get up in the morning, I go to work. When they get up in the morning, they have nowhere to go. I was told to the city manager yesterday out in the foyer, and he said, "Here's these spots, these squares here." I go out, he'll complain, I say, "You can't be here on this spot." But I don't tell them where they can go. They leave that spot to go to another spot. "You can't be here." They leave that spot, "You gotta go to another spot." "They can't be here, you can't be here, you can't be here." Well, we don't tell them where they can be, so they're going to go wherever they go. And so until we do something like that, until we decide that it's worth looking at those who are unsheltered, in the same light as we do those who want to be sheltered, we're going to continue to have this problem. And it's not going to be easy to solve. It's going to take time, it takes money, and it's going to be those-- I am in the process now of working with those, some of those who are unsheltered, to tell me how we can do this. What is it you want? You know what they say? We want to be left alone. We had a camp out there called Tillman Camp, out on Crumfield Highway, big piece of property, about 10 acres. And so we even then said, "You gotta go." They said, "Well, where we going? We don't know. We just got to go." And some of those people have been out there 20, 25 years. 20, 25 years in that camp. So my thought was, why don't we buy this property? And why don't we put services out there? And St. Petersburg, for example, they have laundromat, they have a cafeteria, they take a pledge, the Ten Commandments are posted, they have cleanup behind themselves, all of these things come in. It's called Hope City in St. Petersburg, and it's great, it's working well. In the beginning, I think the community didn't like it until they saw what was happening, and the complaints from the community went down. Princess Richardson, you know about the place out on Pilsocole and Cactus, out there by the Curtis Town, Chuck White and his group went in and cleaned it up. That's one area that we were trying to-- we were trying to make that an outdoor shelter, where they had their own little pods covering, but it didn't work for some reason. Now, think about this, downtown in front of Nick's Parkery, it's all downtown and bus stops. You'll notice that, they are there because they got a little shelter over them, and they got some concrete there, and they're telling us they don't need much. They don't need much. So when we decide that we're going to look at that in a way that it's okay to have outdoor sheltering, and the community is going to accept it, because I think our complaints will go way down if we do that for those people. But we gotta, you gotta do it. If you don't do it, you're going to continue to have Mayor Daley complaints coming to your office, commissioners complaints coming to your office about them. Highway 27 and Capitol Circle, Highway 27 and truck stop, I mean, Highway 27 and I-10, crime is going to be up. They are, they have nowhere to take a bath or shower, they have nowhere to go to the restrooms, so they're going to do it wherever they can have to, or wherever they can. So we gotta, we gotta bite the bullet and make sure that that's what we're going to do, and provide something for them that are unsheltered.
Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, I think at this point, we'll move to, and I really appreciate the feedback of our experts, and so you just heard a kind of a wide-ranging point of view, or points of view. And I think that that really illustrates the complexity of this issue, whether it's Dr. Thomas, working directly with our families, talking about not just an individual that's displaced if they're evicted, but an entire, or multiple generations. And I think we're at the point of some recommended actions that we are putting before you today, specifically dealing with that, to make sure that we know-- so you've heard described today that about 470 people, as we understand it, are in our emergency sheltering operations in our community. Another 200 are unsheltered, as I understand it, maybe throughout 40 or so encampments in our community. So that makes almost 700 people. And then we have potentially thousands of members of households that face evictions. And I think the most important thing for us to focus on is, we don't want to exacerbate an already difficult situation. So action today is necessary in every way possible, and then also understand the landscape. You heard from Mr. Barber about other solutions, other tools in the toolbox that may be worth exploring in the future. So I think we're at the point to have been a kind of share our recommended next steps at now?
Yes, sir. So you have in your agenda packet, of course, if you would, please accept the report, and then we dive into the landlord risk mitigation. And what we've offered is a starting point. Again, I think that the shape of it can continue to evolve with input from our partners, but we think it's possible to initiate a fund at $250,000, and we would look to utilize existing local resources that we have and try to match it with state and federal resources, because you do want it to be a recurring fund, a fund that is available with some level of perpetuity and security for our partners. And we would also look at ways that we would partner with other funding sources as well, for example, with the county, or with any private sector that wants to be part of the solution. But the recommendation here would be the city commission taking a leadership step at this time. And then, lastly, we do recommend and want to hear more direction about how we can partner with local agencies, and we've shared a couple of those examples. There are many options that are available to us pre-eviction or pre-foreclosure, as well as during the process. And then, of course, there's some post-eviction policy-level solutions that are possible. It's wide-ranging, and if you feel overwhelmed, it's because it is a big issue. But again, with the recommendation today, we want to hear from you and receive the direction on how we can move forward.
Mr. Barber?
Yes, and let me say this to you. When we talk about affordable housing, affordable housing for those who are unsheltered, and we're trying to get them into housing, it's a different cost level. They don't have jobs, and most of them that do have income, it's going to be less than $1,000 per month. And so if you're talking about rent, you're talking about utility payment, talking about medicine, you're talking about food, you can see that $1,000 a month for rent is out of the question. It's going to be something that's going to be what we really call affordable, based on what the amount of money that's coming into their house, into their homes, into them. So that's, for me, that's a different level of affordability in terms of what it's going to cost.
Mr. Manager? Final comments?
I think we've put it out there. Again, I think Abena, her comment, that it feels overwhelming, because it is overwhelming. But I think it's incumbent upon us to be very focused. I'll go back again to, clearly, we've heard a lot of information about the state of affairs, things happening nationally, understanding our unsheltered population. And we have, again, I think, I think we have to be very careful not to exacerbate that. And we understand the growing number of potential evictions. I'll come back to, by the way, I think Abena said it, underscored, we don't see the same pressure in foreclosures yet. We don't know if we're going to see it, but we know that's a trailing, lagging indicator. But we see it with evictions. We have 438 pending active eviction cases. I think we should expect that to grow. So I think we've got to be very focused on that topic, and then we have to explore, and what we're looking to from you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, do we work on other tools for the toolbox? We've got a really complex issue here. We want to work on that as well. But the recommended actions are very, very focused on doing our level best as a community to keep people in the housing that they're in today, and bring about stability to thousands of members of our community. So we're looking for discussion today. We wanted to give you all this information. We don't think that stops here, but we want to be as ahead of this as we can be. I sent you a news article from CBS yesterday, somebody sent it to me, and I couldn't believe how spot-on it was with the discussion that we were going to have today. It was exactly the discussion we're having here. It was the, I can't remember which--
It was a segment from 60 Minutes.
Right, it was 60 Minutes. It was one of the national news--
It was Sunday Morning, CBS Sunday Morning.
Sunday Morning.
CBS, but it was a national perspective. It was exactly the conversation that we're having here. And so certainly looking forward to your comments, any direction. We hope you accept our recommended actions, and I think we'll continue to work on this topic, and others that put pressure on our community. But I think this faces us today, especially the looming eviction of hundreds of potential households.
Excellent. So here's what I propose, colleagues. I'm going to start off with my comments, and we'll just go straight down the line, give everybody the opportunity to speak. And if you want to double back, based on some of the conversation, we'll stay as long as everybody has time for and wants to, and answer all the questions that we have. Abena, fantastic job with the presentation. This is a very tough issue, and you did a great job. And I want to thank all the community partners that participated today, Stephanie and Amanda in particular, that called in. Delmas, thank you for your insight as well. And I want to thank the Big Ben Continuum of Care for what they do on a day-to-day basis in this community in regards to homelessness. Commissioner Porter is right, we have recommended action in front of us, but this is also a bigger conversation of other things that are going on in the community. For the purpose of the recommendations, I strongly support item number two and number three. But I also hear what Mr. Barber has to say, and I would love, for part of the motion today, also to charge staff with working with the Continuum of Care and our community partners to bring back an agenda item ASAP, if not the direction to move forward to create some type of outdoor venue, as it was proposed by Mr. Barber, to do it immediately with those unsheltered in our community that are experiencing homelessness. It is a crisis situation, and it's-- so for the record, I'm very much in favor of the staff recommendation, and seeing some direction, and look forward to hearing from my colleagues' direction on some type of outdoor venue. So, couple of comments. Abena, one of the things that I did not hear today is, what are we seeing in surrounding counties? Waukulla County, Jefferson, Jackson, South Georgia, Gadsden County, even farther west, farther south, farther east, farther north. My other concern is, within a four-hour radius, we are the largest municipality, and with the housing crisis that we are preparing for here locally, have we thought and are we preparing, heaven forbid, for an influx of those that might lose residency, say, in South Georgia, that decide to come to Tallahassee because we have resources here? Tell me about the conversations you've had with the Big Ben Continuum of Care and our regional partners in preparation for what we're talking about today.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. And I will allow Stephanie to give some context, because the Legal Services of North Florida actually does serve a broad network-- Services of North Florida actually does serve a broad, um, uh, network, uh, and across several counties. And so I think she'll have some good insight about what she's seeing across the, the region. Um, as well as the Big Ben Continuum of Care, they serve multiple counties as well. Uh, without any surprise, you know that the city and the county are probably the most active, uh, part of the continuum. We're, we're very engaged financially, uh, as well as on the policy level. While we have some partners that generally join our conversations, they are often looking to the city of Tallahassee for leadership. Um, we simply have more resources. We have, uh, spent a lot of time and attention developing solutions. And so I do think that, um, if, if nothing else, anecdotally, uh, folks are waiting for Tallahassee to have good solutions. But we do also see the population that comes in from the surrounding areas. And I think that's been a trend for many, many years, folks that are seeking, uh, resources, jobs, uh, even shelter in our region. If Amanda, you're still on, I, I welcome you to chime in on what your, uh, what our partners in the other counties, uh, have shared.
We might have lost her.
Might have lost her.
No, I'm here. Yeah, okay. Um, so, yeah, so we, Abena's exactly right. So typically, um, uh, our surrounding counties do send a lot of folks here for services, um, especially emergency shelter and other types of, um, opportunities for financial assistance.
Amanda, let me stop you real, Amanda, let me stop you real quick and let me make sure I understand what you just said. Other jurisdictions are sending their people experiencing homelessness to Tallahassee formally?
It, it's informal because most people, um, try to search for, by themselves for services and the closest services that they can find are within the city of Tallahassee. Um, this past year, just recently, um, the Kearney Center received about 700,000 in diversion funds from the state that helped to keep people from our surrounding counties from having to enter our community. Um, so that has been working to keep people in their own communities with their own supports and in their own housing in their counties. Um, so that is also something that's been added to the array of services that have, that has helped to keep the increase of numbers from other counties coming our way. That is not likely to be a long-term financial commitment. Um, it's probably going to be a one-year, uh, legislative commitment. And so without that diversion in place, um, we're going to see what we used to see in that, um, our rural counties, folks are gonna be coming here for service, emergency shelter, financial assistance. Um, I would urge the, the commission to work closely with the other counties, um, and cities to, uh, make sure that we have adequate support in those rural counties. Um, I think that if we make some suggestions to them about how to handle it, they will, um, cooperate, but they need some direction.
Amanda, thank you. That is very insightful.
Um, Mr. Mayor?
And I appreciate it.
Just, just to add to that, I, I visited the, uh, the Kearney Center recently for another event and one of the staff persons out there was telling us at the time that there were jurisdictions, uh, from the surrounding areas where courts would make referrals to the Kearney Center.
Correct.
And these people would show up with a referral from Cairo, Georgia-
Correct.
And they didn't know who they were or why they, but they, they've, they've, they've since eliminated that, but at one point that was happening, that courts were making referrals to the Kearney Center in Tallahassee. And these people would show up and I, I was referred by the court and, uh-
It is, it is an issue-
And so I think, I think now it's probably still happening on the informal basis, right? As was mentioned.
It is an issue I've always heard anecdotally. This was the first time I've ever heard it formally in a meeting, that there are other jurisdictions that are sending. That is a conversation that needs to continue. And Amanda, I will definitely take up your advice and, um, um, speak to my colleagues, mayors of other communities and, um, and, and try to wrap our head around this. So when it comes to the unsheltered-
Yes.
It was mentioned, and, and Abena helped me out here as well, it was mentioned that our numbers have doubled in the past year or two years, I believe.
Well- So do you have the point in time count?
Yes, um, in, in, in 2019, we had 91 unsheltered. Uh, 2020, it was 109, but this was January of 2020.
Right.
All right? Now, and, uh, Amanda just said that now it's about 200. And our matter is gonna get even higher than that as evictions come. So that's, that's where we are now.
So I guess my question is too, and I, and I have participated in the point in time count previously from the county perspective, and I know that we do, um, um, you know, anecdotal conversations, where did you come from, what's your situation? Delmas, again, when we talk about the unsheltered-
Yes.
-that are encamping in Tallahassee, how many people roughly percentage-wise do you think are, are citizens that are going through eviction or going through, uh, you know, some other, um, problem that had put them on the streets versus are from other jurisdictions that are coming to Tallahassee?
And that's hard to, that's hard to, that's hard to say. I do know that there's one guy that camps out in front of, uh, the service station at Monroe in Tennessee that we are going to make into the dispensary, and he's from Georgia. Uh, and I'll talk with a few other of them and they're from other places too, but it's hard to say what percentages there is of, of those that are coming from other places. I do know this though, that, um, uh, there have been instances where, uh, law enforcement has dropped people off through the Kearney Center, drop them and they're gone. I know that that's just happened.
Right.
And so I don't know the percentage of how many from other jurisdictions there are, but even at that, uh, uh, they are still there.
Yeah. And by the way-
And causing us some, 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 some problems and causing us some, some hard part here in this city.
By the way, Delmas, it is not lost that you are on the front line, working day in and day out with our Continuum of Care and working with those that are experiencing homelessness. And we certainly do appreciate that-
Thank you, sir.
Uh, with, with the good work that you're doing. There is a bigger conversation, Mr. Manager, that needs to take place regarding homelessness. And there's so many facets to it. There's the housing facet, there's how do we provide more, uh, housing stock in our community? How do we deal with those that are unsheltered? Um, and how do we make sure that we take care of those that are experiencing homelessness? But there's also the immediate need of, we have a population right now that could even get larger in the next couple of months. That's why I'm very interested in hearing your direction and recommendations on an outdoor, uh, facility. Look, I, I, I struggle with this because, you know, for my own faith and how I was raised, we, we, we have to take care of our brothers and sisters. But at the same time, we, it is illegal to have 40 encampments in Tallahassee. It's my understanding, Madam Attorney, there's only one legal place to camp outside in Leon County and that's at the campground at Lake Talcott. So either we take a hard look at our policies and procedures and local ordinances that allow for outdoor camping, because you can't camp overnight in city of Tallahassee public space, correct?
Right.
And unless you have permission to camp on private land, there's no place technically to camp legal. And I know a lot of the complaints that you get through our office, um, are, uh, some are public safety downtown.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Some are, um, the impact of local businesses. I know that you, you, you get those as well. Um, we, this is an issue that we have to have, uh, we have to have the conversation about moving forward. And I don't have an answer for you, but the 40 encampments, that, that's not healthy. It's not healthy from a COVID standpoint. That's not healthy from a personal hygiene standpoint. Uh, and I am sure that Amanda, uh, with Big Ben Continuum of Care, even the great work they do, we can do better. And I think that we should strive to do better. But let me be quiet so that everyone else has an opportunity to, to speak and ask questions as well. But to summarize, for the purposes of today's workshop, I am in favor of the staff recommendation, but also coming up with an immediate solution dealing with those, um, that, that are still living outside, um, in the immediate future while we work on the long, long-term issue. You had final comment, Mr. Barber?
Because I believe that, uh, with, with, with those, I, I call them outdoor shelters. I don't like encampment. Uh, I believe that they can be clean, they can be safe, uh, we can put wash stations out there, we can, one in St. Petersburg, they have no alcohol, uh, no families, uh, the police department is the one that screens them and, and refers them to the camp. All kinds of things I think that we can do with, to make them safe and make them clean. As a matter of fact, those that live there, uh, they have a responsibility to participate in keeping it clean. Uh, we have done some cleanups around here in, uh, the Tillman Cabin example, when we went out there, the people who are out there, they were the ones who helped us clean it up, get the trash out, o- over at, uh, uh, on Puscola, that property out there, that's west of the marathon, with Chuck White and his group, they helped clean it up. So I think it can be done.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Uh, excuse me. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Mr. Barber and Ms. Ajata for the presentation. Um, I agree with, um, the recommendations, um, the, the mayor just made, but it, but I do want to, um, dig a little deeper. We, we have to have the two conversations, what we're gonna do about people experiencing homelessness and also the immediate, um, eviction crisis. And I just want to make, uh, Mr. Manager, this is my number one priority, that we all hands on deck to focus what's, on what's coming, um, before us and, uh, we realize that we'll take additional resources, um, additional commitments on, on the city commission's standpoint. And I just want to let you know my position, I'm, any recommend, recommendations you have that you're gonna bring forward or if there's, um, solutions that you see, uh, we want to hear about those, um, as soon as possible because we know, um, I think the recommendation is a good start to, um, kind of slow the evictions, but what's coming is, um, much more dire as, as has been expressed. To, um, um, sheltering and, and, and outdoor shelter, I think we, we, we already do it anyway, right? We have locations such as, um, Lake Ella before the shelters were removed or we knew, um, people could, outreach centers could go and that sort of thing and provide services and have a set location. So I, I do think that makes sense, um, especially people who are chronically homeless who, um, we all interact with people who don't want to go inside or don't want to seek, um, other services and, uh, to have a, um, direct connection or a place that they can go where they can feel left alone, but also receive help and services and, um, keep it cleanly and that sort of thing makes absolute sense to me. So I'm in, um, supportive of that, that idea. But I do want to look back at, uh, moving into housing, um, looking at where we were before COVID started, when we talked about, uh, half of the population being cospored and, and housing and how we, how we look long-term to be more resilient so we can better address these situations when they come up. And we heard a lot about, um, people who can only afford $200 a month or $250 a month. We know that there's probably not a private market that's gonna step up and meet that demand. It's not very, um, profitable. So I do think, as we've seen, public housing defunded over the course of decades, that the problem just continues to get worse. So I do think there, in the future, we should look at, um, opportunities where the city can contribute to more publicly owned housing for those people in poverty and very low-income, um, people, um, one of the public speakers mentioned, um, purchasing a hotel, um, that's an option, but I, I think that's on the right track of looking at where we can create units that are publicly owned, where people can live, um, for $200, $250, because that demand is not gonna go away. And I don't think without government interaction, our nonprofits aren't gonna be able to deliver on it, our private sector's not gonna be, be able to deliver on it. And at the end of the day, we're the ones gonna be spending money on law enforcement and all the things that come down the line as a result. Um, shifting to the, um, evictions that are coming up. I, I know we have a lot that's going on with, waiting to see what the federal government's gonna do and what type of, uh, um, assistance, um, they can provide, but just looking at the numbers, uh, 12,000 passed due utility accounts and I think 7,000 people receive rent assistance. I assume there's thousands and thousands of more who've been at receive, um, re- rent assistance and, and the money, um, is, is drying up. So just looking at that issue when we come back at the next meeting, um, where do we go from here, you know? I, I, I know it's not easy to say we're, we can get the funding to, to pay all this, but I, I do want to look for more creative ideas of how do we stop these people from ending up on the streets? We don't want to create an outdoor shelter that we're sending people who just got evicted to, right? Like, how do we get, um, ahead of that? Um, the landlord, um, program I think is a great start. Um, I did want to ask a question about, someone had mentioned tenant, uh, protections for tenants and are, if the landlord has access to this program, is there a delay in eviction or any, anything of that sort?
Yes, Commissioner, that's one way that you can structure the fund, where anybody who has access to it agrees to, for example, a period of mediation, uh, before they evict, um, that they might, um, guarantee 60 days, 30 days, uh, of rights. We might do more direct coaching with the tenants that are connected to a landlord using that fund. So there, there are multiple ways we can do that. And as Stephanie mentioned, making sure that the tenants' rights are protected, but also the landlords have some commitments as well as they partner with us in order to access those funds.
Okay. And can you expand just a little bit further on, um, how the landlord accesses the funds and what, um, expenses could be covered with it?
Yes, thank you. Um, the, the fund, what we've seen nationally is that it really is, uh, a sense of security. What we see nationally is that for risk mitigation funds, landlords end up not really, uh, needing to tap into it, but there is a sense of, uh, partnership that is conveyed by having that fund available. So similar to a security deposit, a landlord will tap into that if there's an issue that comes up with that, uh, property. The landlord, having gone through whatever stipulations have been provided, a period of mediation, negotiation, working directly with the council, uh, with the tenants, if that doesn't work, they're able to access, for example, a one-to-one match with their security deposit. And again, that would be by design. So if your, uh, deposit is a thousand, you can have access to another thousand dollars to address any issue that might come up, uh, with that tenant. And that comes with an agreement that you would take a tenant, for example, that would be considered high-risk, having had an eviction, uh, maybe not having the type of, uh, income verification that you'd require. Some landlords require, uh, you know, three months' worth of, uh, a secured job, a consistent income coming in, that is three times what their rent might be, which is reasonable and is prudent. Um, so if a landlord is willing to work with tenants, that might be less than ideal, uh, in their portfolio, then they might have access to this fund as a, another form of, um, security.
Okay, thank you. Um, and, and that kind of segues into my, to my last, um, comment just about, um, how we can assist people, um, getting into housing, um, more affordably. You know, a lot of times landlords will require first months, last months and a security deposit, um, all at once. And we've seen, um, places around the country have taken a, a different step where you can charge those fees, but maybe it has to be deferred over the entire 12 months. So, and, and a, a portion of the security deposit gets paid. So people who are maybe coming off of the eviction crisis or have been unemployed and don't necessarily have that money saved up, but just to get us back to where we were, it would give an opportunity for, um, you know, landlords to still be able to receive a security deposit, but not have the cost burden of somebody who maybe just found a job or, or just got back on it. Um, also-
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think what we're hearing this morning is that this is a wide-ranging and complex issue. There are not gonna be any simple and immediate solutions to it. We've been working on this for probably decades now. Uh, it's grown over the years. Uh, in the six years that I've been here, I've seen the issue, uh, increase, um, and COVID has exacerbated it to a large degree. Uh, we, I think there are a number of areas that, that we're gonna have to look at and, and have, and work with our partners because certainly the city of Tallahassee is not gonna be able to fund all of the issues-
Right.
-that we're gonna be addressing. Uh, is that the role of city government to buy a hotel and make it available for housing? Is that our role? How much is that gonna cost? Because you've got costs associated with the purchase, the upkeep, the maintenance, the staffing. What is that gonna cost us? If that's the direction we start to see ourselves go, if that's the direction that this community wants to go, because I don't know that we can make that decision for this community. We've got to have input from the community, that that's what they would like to see us, that our citizens and taxpayers would like to see us go, the direction that they would like to see us go in. I, I, I see a number of issues that, that we need to address and we've talked about all of them kind of individually, but collectively at the same time. We've talked about the foreclosure- We've talked about the foreclosures. Now, you know, how do we address that? In large part, I think that those are individuals who have lost employment and have not been able to pay their mortgage, and so their mortgage is being foreclosed on. How do we help them? There's a different strategy for helping those people, because they have lost jobs. They don't have employment to pay that monthly mortgage. So how do we help them to find a job or to get alternate training that will allow them to be employed so that they can pay that monthly mortgage that they have been paying? That's one issue. The other is the evictions that we've talked about. And how do we, how do we address that? Because the landlords do have an obligation, and even in that segment that we looked at, there was one guy who had a number of housing units, and, you know, he said, "Well, you know, the bank is telling me they're gonna foreclose on my property. And so I can't keep these people in my housing when I'm about to lose the property that I own, that I'm renting to them." So how do we, how do we address the issue of evictions? This is a step in the right direction, but a step, maybe a minimal step in this whole process, because, again, you've got issues of employment. Some of these people have, again, they've lost jobs. They don't have a way to even pay the rent that they were paying. Do they have the education and training for alternative employment? If where they have been, they've lost that employment. So those are some of the issues. And, you know, then we talked about subsidized housing through the Tallahassee Housing Authority. Well, they've got 1,500 people on a waiting list for subsidized housing. How do we address that? You know, that's a federal government issue, because that's federally subsidized housing, federal, state, maybe. And so that's a whole nother, a whole nother issue in terms of the subsidized housing, Section 8, the Housing Authority and the subsidized housing in the apartment complexes that we have around town. And then this whole issue of the unshelter, which can be caused and may cause, Commissioner Porter, some of the, be caused by some of the evictions that we are likely to see if these individuals don't, again, in that segment that we reviewed, Mr. City Manager, there was young, one young lady who was single, I think she had two or three kids, and she said, "Well, I'm not gonna be homeless, but I'm gonna have to live with a family member, and it's gonna be tight quarters." Was her, and we've got a lot of that in our city, people living in tight quarters. They're not homeless, they're not unsheltered, but you may have six or eight people living in a two or three bedroom house or apartment. And some of those, they are homeless because they can't afford to live by themselves. And then, like I said, you've, we've got this issue of the unsheltered, some of those delmas who, they don't want to live in an apartment or a house. They are just as content being outside, but that causes other problems. You know, they panhandle on the street, you know, the situation we had on Pensacola Street that we eventually got cleaned up. But now, where the, I don't know if you've been out there recently, but where the car wash used to be.
Yes, it's now cleaned up.
They've taken that over, and it looks, ugh.
North Monroe Street.
Yeah, like North Monroe Street. But I'm not sure that I'm sold yet on the outdoor shelters. I would want to see what's happening in St. Petersburg, because I know when we, when they were encamping on Pensacola Street, not only were they sheltering there, but there was prostitution going on up in there, there was crime, there was drug sales going on up in there. And so, you know, health and safety issues, I would be willing to explore that, but, and it might have to be more than one. We talk about transportation or the lack of transportation. If we had one at the intersection of I-10 and North Monroe, where does somebody from Orange, how does somebody from Orange Avenue get to that one? And so are we looking at multiple outdoor shelters? And how do we provide for those in terms of sanitation and healthcare? So I would be interested in exploring those issues as well. It's, it's, it's a wide-ranging and complex issue. I think we, we're, this is just, I don't want to say a drop in the bucket, but in terms of the magnitude of the problem, it may well be $250,000. It may well be. But it's gonna have to be a community issue. It's gonna have to be all of our partners, the county, our not-for-profits, the Big Ben Housing Coalition, all of us that are interested in these issues, coming together and looking at not only the long-term issues, but the short-term issues of those who are likely to be evicted. And my wife and I talk about this all the time. She said they're lining up at the courthouse, and come January 1, it is gonna be a huge problem in terms of those who will be evicted and what are we gonna have available for them? So though, I don't, I don't want any of us to think, and I don't, I don't think any of us do, that this is gonna be something that we can solve overnight or that the city itself can resolve. The surrounding, and I'll say this and I'm done, you know, these surrounding communities are largely rural communities. They might want to help, but they're, they're even more fiscally constrained than Tallahassee and Leon County. They don't have the money to put, so that's why they're like, you know, Tallahassee's got some healthcare over there, they've got Carney Center, why don't you kind of go over to Tallahassee and see what you can do over there? They're probably encouraging their people, their homeless people, to come to Tallahassee and Leon County because of that. So I, I mean, it, you know, I think we do need to reach out to them, because it's, it's gonna be a regional issue. It is just, it's gonna be complex, and I don't want any of us to think that we're gonna solve this tomorrow, but we certainly have to continue to work on the long-term issues and then the immediate assistance for those who are facing eviction come December 31st. So that's all I have at this point, Mr. Mayor, but I do support the staff's recommendations here, and maybe exploring the outdoor shelters, because I can't, I don't, I can't imagine we could limit it to a shelter to address this entire need. But I think, as was mentioned in the presentation, we probably are off to a better start than many other municipalities and counties in our area, and maybe even in the state. And so we just need to continue doing what we're doing and see how we can come to both those short, long-term and short-term solutions.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Williams Cox.
Mr. Mayor, I would, if, with you all's permission, I'd like to ask Commissioner Porter to go before me, because I know she's already prepared, and she has a list of questions. I want to make sure she.
Missed our opportunity here.
Sure, thank you. So I have a few brief questions about, thank you, the, about the report. So for the rapid rehousing efforts, 1.2 million to rapid rehousing efforts, what are those actually looking like, that money?
You mean in terms of the breakdown of how that money is spent?
We have, like, the physical locations where we're rapidly rehousing people? Yeah, like, where are they going?
Sure. So the rapid rehousing funding is distributed between our two main partners, this continuum of care, and they do the coordinated entry, meaning that they, every week, I think, they're meeting together and they're working through the clients, and they're identifying which ones are most ready to be housed, where they have a matrix of decision-making elements that they use to move people through. And then the landlord liaison position is the person that is helping them to identify and match them with an appropriate property. And as Amanda shared, that is one of the challenges that they have in matching them. So $1.4 million funds the triage of it, but also has the direct cash assistance to the client, so paying a security deposit, moving costs, first month's rent, those kinds of expenses to get them started, as well as the case management related to it.
Okay. And for the City Cares Housing Assistance Program, where are we advertising that? Because I was even trying to Google it, and I really couldn't even find it. I mean, I did see it once I set up, like, I logged into the portal, but it seemed like I couldn't find more information about it, you know, for people out in the public.
Sure. The City Cares Program is funded also through the Florida Housing Finance Corporation to the city, initially when we actually received two separate allocations for that, but it was a much smaller allocation initially than what we had in our community through the Leon County Cares. So our city staff has been working since March directly with the county to make sure there's a single port of entry and to minimize the confusion for the community. And so the individual assistance through the county has been our primary focus to drive folks into, and we know that most of those applicants are gonna be city residents. And so that was the targeted or intentional approach. As the Florida Housing Finance Corporation allocated additional funding to us later down the year and gave us a little bit more flexibility in how those funds can be used, we worked directly with our partners to say, as they get clients that they know are somehow not fitting the model for the other funding sources, that they would direct them through this additional source. So because the portion of, 800,000 was relatively small compared to the 11 million that has been directed to the individual assistance through the county, as well as to reduce confusion, we've targeted that kind of assistance directly with our partners.
So it's kind of, we refer, the partners are referring their clients to apply, and it's not something we're trying to broadcast?
Yes, largely. And that, and that seems to be working. I know, Jean, you gave me some numbers. We have more than 100 applicants that are already in queue for that relatively smaller portion. The majority of those are those that are reentering, that are reentering the housing market, meaning they're currently not housed, and they need assistance paying those upfront costs to be housed. But we're also having referrals from our utility operations as they're encountering residents that are calling and saying, "Hey, I didn't, it didn't work out with Leon Cares for me. Is there any other way we can help?" In addition to the customized payment options, they're referring them to this additional source of resources available to them.
So we've got, do we know what the clerk, kind of like in practice, what is happening if people are filing eviction cases? I mean, are those being processed? Like, for the cases that have been closed this year, where there was the moratorium, what exactly, do we know what that means, that they were closed? I mean, I assume some of them either were dismissed, some of them, the eviction may be proceeded? I mean, do we kind of?
We, we can only tell a little, a limited amount of information based on what is publicly available, and we did ask exactly that same question, what does it mean to be closed? Some of them self-resolve, some of them are able to be negotiated with the landlords. Some of them, the, there's a notice, for example, that they're getting individual assistance from the county, and so the case is closed, and it could be reopened, but for the time being, it is resolved. If I can allow Stephanie Johnson, if she's still on the line, I know she had some hearings today, but she might be able to give a little bit more details on the legal aspects of evictions.
Johnson, are you still with us?
I'm still here, yes. So, yeah, a lot of cases were closed because folks got Leon County Cares money or some type of rental assistance. And so some of those earlier cases, folks did get the rental assistance, and the landlords agreed to dismiss. What we're seeing, though, is many of those people that closed, the landlords then refiled two or three months later. So some of those are duplicate filings, not, you know, just the same tenants. But, yeah, I mean, typically what happens is when a landlord files the eviction, we, and we advise folks to get their CDC declaration in immediately and then request that that eviction action be suspended. And then, so there's, I would probably say at least 70% of those cases that are pending have a CDC declaration, and the, so that, so the eviction has already been filed, but they can't proceed with a final judgment of eviction until after December 31st. So the cases that were closed initially were either closed because the tenants just went ahead and left, or they were negotiated, or there were some final judgments, because the non-payment of eviction cases, other than non-payment where maybe somebody breached the lease, or they did something to breach the lease, those evictions went through.
Okay, thank you. So as far as the, you know, and we've had a lot of great comments, and thank you for the presentation, you know, when we're talking about the issue of housing, we've identified, there's different populations, you know, I mean, there's, there are the unsheltered populations who suffer from mental health diseases, who really need support and care. There are people who, with support and care, could probably live independent, you know, economically secure lives. There are families, there are people who've lost their jobs and who otherwise would not be facing eviction. You know, we're talking about different kinds of populations, and the assistance is gonna be different. So for, you know, I have a few questions about the Landlord Risk Mitigation Fund and whether it's, so on the one hand, this could be kind of an eviction risk mitigation fund, where the main purpose is to relieve the burden, the financial burden, on landlords and tenants for unpaid rent. And then the other use could be that it's, we're helping relieve the risk burden that landlords take on by leasing to high-risk tenants. So those are kind of separate things, because we have people now who are facing eviction who are not high-risk tenants. They just lost their jobs. So I don't know if you have clarification, because it seems like those would be two separate things.
Sure. The, it can be, and I think what we would want to take direction from you all is, in coordination with our partners, design it as to how we want it to work. For example, as Stephanie had mentioned, you know, there are funds that are set up where, in the negotiation process, before an eviction, we can say, "Hey, would it help you feel a little bit more secure if you had access to a fund like this?" We, I think what we've heard nationally, particularly to landlords, is, "Hold on, help is coming." And I think landlords feel like, "Well, we're not sure if help is coming, and we're not sure if it'll be enough." And so, again, a fund like this could be established as a way to say, "We really do want your partnership. We're willing to put, you know, something down to say, yes, there's, there's some risks to you, and if nothing else, there's the little pool that will be part of your security deposit, or at least to match that." But absolutely, it can be designed solely to benefit housing reentry, so for those that are now entering into a new lease, where, again, you could add stipulations, for example, that if a landlord participates and has access to it, they agree to not begin filing evictions until they have gone through a negotiation or some kind of mediation before they, they reach that. So by design, and with your direction, we can tailor it as needed.
Okay, thank you. Just a few more follow-up questions. So, you know, I think a few of us, a few commissioners have already, and speakers expressed some of what, you know, some ideas about the design, you know, making sure that we have protections for, for tenants, especially, you know, in the case where, you know, if you receive that assistance, that you're not gonna just turn around, you know, and evict them after 90 days or, you know, whatever. I know that I was reading about some of these, and there are, that is, other cities do things like that. You know, if there's a way that we could prioritize people who have already received eviction notices, so that... eviction notices, so that, you know, we're getting ahead of, because the, you know, I think the primary, most urgent goal is to keep people in their homes. Okay, some other, some other idea, I guess I'm also curious what other alternatives, if any. I know this was, in some ways, this workshop was last minute, and even just the impending, you know, lift of the moratorium. I'm curious to see if under a new administration, that CDC moratorium may be extended, but still, it's not, that's not, you know, a long-term solution. Did, were any other programs considered or ideas, you know, from your office?
So we did, as part of the agenda, look at some of the jurisdictions within Florida and actually Dr. Kimball pulled together some examples. And I'll let him expound upon that. But I think what we've seen is that we're all sort of learning from each other perhaps, and the portfolio of relief that has been implemented here is among, so far, the best practices. But there are also more that can be done more on eviction prevention. And there are some ideas nationally around education and counseling and outreach, targeted match of funding to counseling rather than sort of a general pool. And as I alluded to, there are some policy-level things that I think are probably beyond the city government's jurisdiction. For example, masking eviction filing records, or mandating that that cannot be used for tenant in future cases. I'm not sure, that's a city attorney sort of question about what we have the jurisdiction to be able to implement. But certainly, I think there are some examples that are being explored at the national level. Dr. Kimball, did you want to add to the examples?
Yes, I think the information in your packet is what we pulled from different cities. You had the Sarasoli City Commission information with respect to rental assistance, Orange County, Florida, and Durham, North Carolina, the same, a few, and also Pinellas. And all those basically had a caveat of providing landlord assistance like this proposal would do, but also tenant information, some direct funds to households if possible. So you had a whole cadre of landlord assistance, tenant assistance, and household assistance with respect to some guidelines with respect to how you could use those funds.
Okay, thank you. One thing that, Madam Attorney, if you have any input on this, I've, you know, I have seen that local governments in Florida can protect renters through local rent stabilization orders, through statute, Florida statutes 1250103, which is tailored to, I mean, usually we know that we can't do things like that. But in the case of an emergency and lasting only a year, local governments can implement rent stabilization measures if we have identified a housing emergency so grave as to constitute a serious menace to the general public, which I think most of us would agree, this constitutes an emergency of that order. So I don't know if that's something that we can look into. Just as far as alternatives to what's been brought before us, that other communities, you know, have done, whether it's an eviction diversion program, some sort of right to local, to local right to counsel, so that we're working with our stakeholders on the legal end. There's a lot of good research showing that not only is that cost-effective, but it keeps like 84% of people in their homes when they have access to that kind of legal assistance. I would also, you know, be very, I would support, if this body were interested in passing a resolution to urge the governor to extend, to extend and expand eviction and foreclosure moratoriums, not only for residential, for residences, but also for small businesses as well. So, you know, I don't know if I need to make a motion for that, or I know there's a lot more discretion and I'm throwing a lot out there. I just think that there are a lot of other ideas that we should be considering, not only to meet this very acute need, but, but moving into the future, because this is, we have a national and local housing crisis, and I consider it to be a man-made crisis that we can and need to fix. And it's only to our benefit, you know, if we do fix that. There's also been research showing the direct correlation between evictions and people who are getting COVID and dying. So, and we know with, with the weather being what it is, I mean, it's never comfortable to not have a home, but now more than ever, it's, you know, it's really a life or death issue if people are being evicted. One last question, where did the $250,000 come from?
It is an estimate of how we might start.
Okay.
We, as you probably know, we have very limited resources specifically for housing. And so we also gave the flexibility of exploring state and federal funding to either supplement that or expand that. We think we'll need the help from other partners as well to put into the fund. So 250 is a starting point.
Right.
But quite frankly, there's, there's not a, an extensive research on what we think is needed, because it is, again, it's an insurance kind of policy versus something where we expect it to be a direct draw, as we've done with direct assistance in emergencies. This fund is really more of a backup option.
And is there a way that we can do our best to prioritize? You know, there's a difference between people who are kind of just mom and pop, they own the house next door that they rented, you know, and these property management companies that have access to resources and capital, you know. I would like to make sure that the people who need it most, not only the tenants, but also the landlords themselves, are prioritized, so that we're not just subsidizing, you know, large property management corporations who I'm sure are struggling, but not as much as, you know, the average person who might own one or two rental homes.
Yes, I think we can absolutely add that as part of the design. I don't think it would be unusual to prioritize based on the size of property that is being considered.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Williams-Cox, you're recognized.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Porter and all of my other colleagues on your comments. And thank you, Director Avanna and Thomas and Mr. Barber. You know, we're in constant communication, because I get a lot of community requests or reaction because of what's actually going on. And I'll start by saying this, that but for the grace of God, we all could find ourselves in this place. And we can also remember, I was listening to a debate the other night, and in the debate, the candidate said that I'm a Matthews 25 kind of person. And so let me just go ahead on to say that too, in that when you do it for the least of these, you've done it until who sent us. And so we have got to do our best to help those who can't help themselves. And I can speak from some personal experience that I have almost experienced some foreclosures due to loss of jobs. I've also been a recipient of Obamacare due to the loss of a job. I've also had family members and know people. So this is, this is personal, and I take it as such. And so I come to this issue very passionate about it and wanting to find real solutions, but we, we may not be able to afford everything that we're trying to do. So we have to rely on our partners. If anybody in Washington is listening, we need a stimulus bill passed ASAP. That will help more than anything that we could do in this room right now. Put some money in people's pockets, allow folks to be able to, to do things, help cities stay afloat, help counties stay afloat. We need some federal assistance right now. We should not be in this position of having to figure out how we can split pennies to try to help our fellow, our neighbors right now in their time of crisis. So if anybody's listening, we need that stimulus bill passed right away. But in case they're not, we are here in Tallahassee, we'll show them what we can do, what we have to do, we'll show them what we're working with. I heard my colleague, Commissioner Matlow, say that this is his number one priority. Well, I agree that it is a very high priority. My number one priority is to prevent the spread of COVID, because a lot of the situations that we're having has been created by COVID. Folks keep talking about the North Monroe situation. Well, the North Monroe situation, the city of Tallahassee committed to providing money to, to get people out of congregant care, so that they wouldn't spread COVID and to keep folks safe and to keep the community safe. So let's remember, and we didn't tell every, we didn't tell folks to put everybody in one place on North Monroe Street. That happens after, you know, we provided the funding. So whatever the situation is, we're all on board to try to make it work, to fix it. But just know, we didn't put everybody in one hotel up on North Monroe Street. That didn't, that happened beyond us. And so, but we're committed to trying to fix that problem. And we want to fix future or potential homelessness. And that means that we've got to continue to be creative in how we provide housing, how we provide building affordable homes. I know the mayor has said, we need to, we need to hurry up and turn some dirt, but we need to hurry up and turn some dirt and build some housing. But again, affordable housing is one thing, but when we're talking about people who are renting, that's not building a house for them if they're not going to be able to afford their rent. They certainly won't be able to afford a mortgage. So we've got a mix of things that we're, we're going to need to do. Landlords are at risk. We need, we need them to be able to survive, because they have taxes to pay, they have utilities to pay, and you know, we, we do what we do from the collection of utilities. And keep in mind, I saw on the news the other night, I was, I was, I guess I knew it, but I wasn't aware, that we have over 12,000 utility bills that haven't been paid to the tune of, what was it, eight million dollars? So that is an investment right there, because if I don't pay my utility bill, y'all gonna turn me off.
Not yet.
Well, not during this time, but, so those are some things that we need to consider. I think we need to look at having some priorities, especially dealing with families with children and the elderly, when it comes to talking about evicting. I don't want anybody to evict my grandmama or my auntie from anywhere. And if the family can't help, then we are, we need to make sure that that landlord gets what they need to keep from putting these families on the street. Because as Mr. Thomas said, it's generational. I grew up in my grandmama's house, I did. And that's what's happening in a lot of places. We don't, we can't have grandma and them on the street. And Sunday morning, I watched this, this episode, I'm the one who sent it to you recently, because when I saw this and I saw what was happening, as someone said, the lady said, it was cold, it was cold last night, she said. She's sleeping in her car. We cannot have that in the capital city, in the state of Florida, third largest state in the nation. So we're going to do some things to fix that. We got to make sure there are not a lot of barriers. Now, one of the things, one of the complaints I heard about Leon Cares, and I think Commissioner might have maybe gone, that there were, there were barriers to getting that funding, because there were things that they were being asked for that they didn't have. And I heard a speaker say that today too, that they weren't, the landlord wasn't willing to give it to them. And so they, they, many were not accepted, couldn't get funding, because they didn't have some of the documentation. So whatever we're going to do here, we need to make it where people can reach it. You know, I'm not saying just just open the door and give it away, but make it where people can get to the help that they need, because many times, because we're limited in the help. So we put barriers in to, for those who can get in, can get the help, and those who can't, what do they do? I already mentioned creative housing opportunities, affordable housing, being able to build more affordable housing. I see people in the room who are, who are very interested in affordable housing. We've seen proposals from them, so they're acutely listening. So I know they're going, they're ready to help us with this issue, whether they're able to get money from us, our partners, or they're able to go to the bank. Because I had a conversation with a builder recently, that if you really want to help the community by building affordable housing, go to the bank and get some funding, if you can, and build those homes. We need, we need your help in doing that. And finally, I will say that we must do something for the people who want to live outside. Personally, I'm not an outdoor person. It's cold, I want to be warm, I want to be toasty, warm. I like hot, hot showers, and I like warm indoors. I don't want to be cold inside. So I don't know why they want to be outside, but that's their business. If they're not breaking any laws, they're not doing anything to harm anybody, we need to, as Mr. Barber has mentioned, see what we can do. At least, at least we could probably do is pick up the garbage. The least we could possibly do is put some outdoor restroom facilities or something there. Put a washing machine or dryer somewhere out there, so they can wash their clothes and things. Have some, some portable shower or something where they can, and when I say that, I'm not saying that that's totally incumbent upon the city to do. We have people in our community who have the resources personally that can make this happen. So we're calling on those, we're calling on the haves to help the have-nots in their moment of crisis, in our moment of crisis. Help our community, because if a homeless person becomes desperate, you may see them at your house. And if you want to prevent that, then help keep them where they want to be. So let's do what we can for those of us who can write a check, those of us who can make a donation to a partner organization to get those things, and not just in one place, in the places where they already are. Why go and move them somewhere they don't want to be? Let's, let's take help to right where they are. And I said this as my final point, but this is my final point. We do know that the surrounding counties are, people are coming, coming to Leon County. As the mayor said, within a four-hour drive, we're probably the largest, and so I can understand that. They come here for healthcare, they come here for jobs. So quite naturally, they'll come here to look for other resources, and we want them to be able to do that. But I think there needs to be something more formalized. I've heard stories of how people were found at a Star Metro bus stop with a ticket, that they were given a ticket and put on the bus and told to come to Tallahassee. I don't know where they were from, but I've heard that story and I know it. If you go to some of the surrounding counties, you probably don't see many homeless people. There's a reason for that. There are no, there are no services, little to no services where they are, so they come to where the services are. I don't blame them at all. I don't blame them at all. But we need to have some type, some type of, I know we have the Big Ben Continual Care that we, that I'm, I do sit on that committee, Avanna is there, and so is Mr. Barber, and there may be others. But we need to have the governmental, the commissioners, the mayors of these places, because those are the decision-makers. Big Ben Continual Care is doing what they're, what they can do based on what they have. But the decision-makers need to come to the table and decide how we're going to deal with this on a regional way. And not just that, transportation is also a regional issue, because they're having to go back and forth some way or another. So we need decision-makers in some type of regional event to deal with these situations. I think that it has gotten to the point where we have to now. We can't just turn a blind eye to it, and we can't just put people on a bus and send them off somewhere, or have somebody drop them off at the Kearney Center and wish you the best. We've got to do something better than that, because these are human beings with lives and needs that we've, we've got to satisfy. And I see, Mr. Barber, you raised your hand, you'll give some of my time, because I'm finished.
I just wanted to say to the Commissioner and to Commissioner Richardson in particular, that the camp out on Pensacola and Cactus was a pop-up camp, and nobody was there to oversee it, it wasn't organized. And the one in St. Pete, Catholic Charities is doing, I think the one out there on Pensacola, the Kearney Center tried to go in clear cut and put some structure there. So here's what we have. We have a problem that we have no control over. Now, I'd rather have, I'd rather us have a problem that we have, we do have some control over. And so I think that if we develop it right, and we have someone run it, like from Big Ben, from the Catholic Charities, they're doing St. Pete, you'll see that it will run good, it will be proper, and it'll be safe, I believe. And so, I don't know, I think we said that we don't, it's not our role to buy hotels and those sorts of things, but, but it is a problem that's ours, no matter what kind of they come from. kind of they come from. Once they're here, it's the city's problem, even if they are in the county, like the Tillman Camp was. It's in the county, but they said city of Tallahassee, it's your problem.
It's a, it's an opportunity, but I don't call it a problem, it's an opportunity.
Mr. Mayor, if I may jump in, I'll, I'll just kind of, um, you know, wrap a bow around this. And I think in, in, in the comments that you've heard from Mr. Barber is, he's boots on the ground. We've tasked him with a, a real challenging job and what he's essentially saying is, he needs more tools. Uh, you, you have given us direction today. Uh, we certainly would like you to take action on the, uh, recommendations we've made, but I think you've given us action today to explore. Is there another option as it relates to those that are unsheltered, that are not even in our emergency sheltering programs? We will explore that and bring that back to you if that's your direction and I think that's what we've heard today.
I consider that part of option number three, you know, give them staff direction, work with community partners, continue working on this issue. Are we, are we comfortable with that? Commissioner Williams-Cox, first of all, thank you so much for being our representative on the Big Ben Continuum of Care. I meant to lead with that today at the workshop because I think that you are probably more involved on a day-to-day basis as our representative than all of us and thank you for representing as well.
My pleasure.
Let me come to you for, uh, the motion then, for staff recommendation. Um, and I think that we have provided direction for, for our staff to come back as soon as possible with some, with some additional recommendations on how to deal with the unsheltered population. Uh, Commissioner Daniel Williams-Cox.
I make the motion that we accept staff recommendation, um, one, two, and three.
Okay. Excellent. Right, been properly moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Yes, sir.
Question, Mr. Mayor, again, the, the issue becomes if we've got, what are you calling them, dwellments? Not an encampment, but...
Uh, outdoor shelter.
Outdoor shelter.
Yes.
On North Monroe and I-10, how do we serve the population out of Highway 20 or from the Tillman Camp or, I mean, are we looking at just one as a start or do we envision there being multiple camps to serve?
I don't envision there being multiple.
Let me, let me answer that because Commissioner, that's an excellent point and we heard you. First, we're not moving forward with that option. I think the direction is to explore it.
Right.
Commissioner, you made an excellent point. Does it need to be distributed? What's it look like? What's it feel like? Does it, does it provide the right level of service? Is it a real option for the 200 people today that are unsheltered? And so we're, I think we heard you, I think you made an excellent point, all of you. You know, maybe that's a good outlet, uh, for many individuals today that are unsheltered and, and that's the best they can do today. And frankly, we don't have a better option for them. So we'll explore it and, and I think, uh, uh, where it's located and the distribution, I think that all matters.
Motion on the table is for staff recommendation made by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. No further comment. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. Uh, Mr. Mayor, pro temp, then Commissioner Richardson.
Um, I, I wanted to, um, just take a minute to circle back to Commissioner Williams-Cox's, um, point about affordable housing versus, um, low-income housing. And I, I noticed when pulling up the strategic plan, we don't really have low-income housing as a separate item or a separate, um, objective. So I was wondering if we could come back at a future meeting and look at our strategic plan and see how that low-income housing incorporates into, um, our five-year plan.
Can I ask?
Mr. Manager, then on point, Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Commissioner Matlow, I think that's a perfect segue to, um, your January retreat. That, that will anchor the conversation, the strategic plan. So I think that probably is the right time to, to look at those strategic priorities, expand them, you know, change them, you know, have whatever we think is necessary. So I think that'd be the right timing.
Okay. Commissioner Williams-Cox?
Uh, I'll take them.
Excellent. Commissioner Richardson?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh, this is a, an aside, but it's related to what we've discussed. As you all know, the state of Florida has the Sadowski Housing Fund. And probably since that fund was established, the legislature has taken upon itself to raid the fund on an annual basis. I, I believe last year was the first year, uh, that they had, they have dedicated 100% of those funds to housing in the state of Florida. And so I would like to see us add that to our legislative platform.
Great point.
Lobby the legislature to, to dedicate 100% of those funds as they did this year to housing in the state of Florida.
Right, Commissioner Williams-Cox and Commissioner Porter.
I would just say to the, to, to that point, uh, Commissioner Richardson, uh, I think we should join the League of Cities who is already on, on top of that, and they're already doing that, uh, on our behalf, but we can certainly, uh, join them. And even though they didn't raid it last year, they also didn't distribute it either.
Right.
Uh, so it's still sitting there, so, uh, it's very attractive.
Great point. Commissioner Porter.
Um, Abena, when will we, or Mr. Manager, when should we expect to hear back about more details about the, the mitigation fund?
That's a good direction from you. Uh, we, we are prepared to draft that out, uh, as soon as we leave from here. We've actually began a lot of that conversation. So if it is the commissioner's will, we can provide that, um, detail whenever the city manager would like for us.
And, and Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, what, what I would like to do with your action is, um, not wait on the implementation. I think, um, it's imperative that we get started. Uh, we'll assign money to that and I can update you in an email form and we can have subsequent discussions at your meetings. But I would, I would hope you would give us the flexibility to, to move as fast as possible. What I realize is, you have very few meetings between really now and, in January. So, um, I, I think it could be something that is modified and updated if you would like to do that and I can, once the team kind of puts some structure to it and I'll trust our experts, send it to you so you know what it is and we can take feedback that way. But your action, if you wanted to adjust it or take any, uh, make any changes, would be at a subsequent city commission meeting if that's acceptable.
Uh, Mr. Manager, please also let the county know our actions at our workshop today because I know that they have a discussion item on their agenda tonight that is pertinent to this as well. See note, uh, Commissioner Porter.
Um, thank you, Mr. Manager. I do feel like we really are, I agree with everyone that we are in an emergency situation and I would like the opportunity to have another meeting before January for the workshop if we need to just revisit this.
Appreciate the input.
Um, and I would also like to make a motion to, to pass a resolution urging the governor to extend the eviction moratorium.
I'll second that for discussion.
Okay, so is the motion on the table to bring back the agenda items so we have the opportunity to read the, uh, resolution prior to sending it? Or is the motion just to send one now? Commissioner Porter, why we, can we even put something together for tomorrow night's meeting in, in consideration of Commissioner Porter's, uh, motion on the table?
We certainly can do that if that's the will of this commission.
And Commissioner Porter, why don't we, uh, why don't we allow the, um, the motion to be to bring an agenda item and we'll expedite it and put it on as an additional agenda item for tomorrow's meeting?
Thank you.
Okay, been properly moved by Commissioner Porter, signed by Commissioner Matlow for comment.
Uh, yeah, thank you. I, I, I just wanted to add, I mean, I do think it would be, um, the more we let people know the situation that we're facing right here in, in our community, um, the more kids out there. So if we can provide the types of details, um, that we learned about in this meeting, the, you know, tens of thousands of people potentially facing addiction and that sort of thing, to really put, um, the numbers on it, because everybody knows this is coming, but if we can sum it up, how, how is it going to affect Tallahassee specifically and get that message out there? Thank you.
Any further comment? Commissioner Williams-Cox?
I agree with, uh, Commissioner Porter, this is an emergency. I, um, what I, what I do have a, a problem with is making these kinds of quick changes to the agenda for, that's already been noticed. We get beat up a lot about making changes to the agenda, um, without, um, our citizenry knowing that. So I, I don't know, I just, I just offer that, that that's, our commission meeting is tomorrow. And to go from here to doing a resolution, uh, to the governor, um, I'm, I'm just not sure if having that ready for tomorrow, um, and, and on the agenda for this, for the public to see if that's going to be timely enough. Um, is there any other way to, to, to do this, uh, to, uh, send something to the governor?
Well, that's, that is a very fair point for public information as well. Also, let, let us be very clear, there is a legal difference, I believe, from the municipal standpoint between having an emergency and what I think we're referring to by state statute is a declared state of emergency on the local level, which would treasure, trigger certain actions, uh, that a municipality could take. Am I correct, Madam Attorney?
Uh, yes, you are. I think this, this is more in the nature of what was done by the county in terms of just expressing a will of the, of the, of the body. But certainly, we also know that, uh, there is some likelihood that there will be an extension, perhaps an option might be to be prepared for that in January so that the public would have notice. So we can put it on the agenda and then we also can wait and see if something is actually done at the end of this year.
But we are free as, uh, commissioners to write to the governor's office, uh, as individuals if we choose to.
That is always your prerogative.
Madam Attorney, I think you make some good sense. Commissioner Porter, would you be, um, I mean, your motion on the table right now is seconded by Commissioner Matlow is to bring back an agenda item for tomorrow night in regards to a resolution to the governor's office. Would you be interested in considering putting something on the meeting in January to see if action does take place? And then lack thereof, um, having a discussion at the city commission level?
Um, I would like to take a vote on it.
Okay. Motion is on the table, seconded by Commissioner Matlow.
I, I just wanted to follow up on that. I, to, um, the attorney's point, I believe the county just had, they sent a letter essentially explaining, um, the situation and, and what they would like to see. So if, if we move forward with, let's explain the situation, let, let's explain the impact of letting the eviction moratorium expire, what that would look like on our community. Um, at that point, we wouldn't need to pass it as a resolution this month, but we could get that letter out there because the timing is urgent and then we could take up a resolution January 13th. Less urgent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I, I'm not prepared to vote for a resolution. I, I would agree with Commissioner Matlow's, uh, position on a letter, uh, to the governor, but, but, you know, uh, again, you know, thi- this can't be something that we do on the fly. We, we, we've got to show that we're, we're deliberate and thoughtful in what it is we do. Uh, and, and, you know, to, to try to rush a resolution to the agenda for tomorrow, I, I don't think it's a prudent decision to do. Uh, but I do agree that we should express the position of this commission and this city, uh, that it will have a tremendous negative impact, as I'm sure the governor and everybody else knows. But to express that as the position of our commission and in January, if nothing is passed or if it, if the moratorium is not extended, then we do a resolution to the governor requesting that that be the case. Um, and then that would also be the time when legislative committee meetings will start for this year. And, uh, we can put, oh, maybe put some pressure on the legislature, uh, to do something to that effect as well in working with the governor.
Point we'll take, Commissioner Williams-Cox.
I was just going to ask, uh, Commissioner Matlow, were you making an amendment to, uh, the motion on the table?
I, I was offering that up for a discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I'm willing to, um, honestly, more than, I, I'm willing to, to postpone that. I mean, what I'm really interested in though is, I'm just not sure that this meeting alone and not meeting until January, you know, is, is a good enough solution for kind of, I, I don't feel like the program, the mitigation fund is in a, a place I feel comfortable supporting it outright just because there's so many details of the program that aren't, aren't, are unanswered about how it's going to be, you know, implemented. So I support it, but I just would like, I feel like I didn't have enough time to really give, um, follow-up input between now, you know, and then, because I just feel like this is happening very urgently in the next couple of weeks is when more and more people are, you know, by the time January, I just feel like we need more time to discuss this.
Commissioner Williams-Cox?
I, if it, I, I, I hear and feel your concern, but the work that's going to get done is going to be done by staff. And the city manager said he's going to send that, send that work to us, uh, via email so that we can provide our feedback, uh, to that. So, uh, we don't have to meet for this thing to get going. We need to get going, we need them to go right now and get it going. Um, so I, I'll, I'm comfortable with knowing that staff is going to send us, city manager's going to send us something that we can react and respond to so that we can get going and, uh, we can provide feedback as we need to make sure that it happens. And we can, uh, we can inform the public of what's going on. We can keep our constituents informed, but we want to make sure that we inform them of the final information and not, not information that's changing. So once we, once we learn that, we can, we can still share it and we don't have to meet to get it done, but it can be done so that, uh, we can get moving and get people the help that they need.
Motion on table made by Commissioner Porter to send a resolution to the executive office of the governor regarding to, uh, the housing crisis we're facing, seconded by Commissioner Matlow. Mayor Pro temp, you recognize?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to go back to that statement. Mr. Manager, if, if we get a draft of the stable, of the landlord fund and there's something in it any one of us doesn't like, um, we'd be in a position to hold that off and call for a special meeting before, um, it gets, um, implemented.
Takes two commissioners, myself separately with managers separately to be able to call a special meeting. Correct, Madam Attorney?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Porter, I, I'd, um, offer an amendment to the motion on the table that, um, we draft a letter, um, to the governor and our, um, elected delegation, um, explaining the situation that we're in here in Tallahassee, um, including the numbers and our desire to see the eviction moratorium, um, extended, um, and then work on drafting a resolution to come back at the January 13th meeting, um, assuming, um, it does not get extended in January.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
I support that.
Oh, I was going to say, she has to accept the amendment.
Okay. Letter would come under my signature as the official signature of the city. I'd be more than happy, Madam Attorney, would you please, uh, work with the city manager to craft that letter?
Certainly.
Sounds great. I think that's a great compromise. All those in favor of the substitute motion on the table, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. All right, seeing no other business coming before us at this workshop, it is 12:48. We stand adjourned.[1767.42]